...a Thanksgiving meal for our community members. And we understand that we have some community members without homes, which is why we're also providing the warm meals for them and some almavas frescas for them. We have just seen an overwhelming response. I mean, the line is wrapped around both corners right here. We haven't seen a line this long for any of the events that we've done. So it just goes to show how great the need is in this community.
It helps me emotionally, financially, and I just, I want to just thank everybody for the support. I mean, this is great. This is really great.
... receiving the ayuda de esta gente de la alimentación diario.
Que nos haga diario.
Gracias. Agradeciendoles a todos los participantes en estas cosas.
When you look at the communities that we represent and you see the high spikes in COVID increases, it's because people have to work. If you were poor before, it was very difficult. And now that COVID has hit and increases, people don't have the luxury of staying at home and working from home. And on top of it, your kids are struggling. They get connected by the internet to do distance learning. And if you have children and you're living in a one-bedroom apartment, you have to go to work. These are the worst conditions that could ever happen to any working-class communities. And they're right in our backyard. And we're starting with the very basics: helping people to have food on the table and making sure they don't get evicted.
Wear your mask, sanitize, wash your hands. It's not just for yourself, it's for everybody else. We're gonna be good. It's just gonna take time, but we're gonna be all right.
Accessing L.A. gets virtual. SoCal Gas continues donations to schools, and the holidays means new cyber scams to avoid. All this up next on City Beat.
Los Angeles city attorney Mike Fuhr wants Angelenos to be aware of emerging holiday scams, such as the Letter from Santa scam and the social media Secret Santa scam. In both, the promised items never arrive, and victims lose the money they paid while also risking having their personal information stolen.
Please protect yourself from being a victim of package theft. And let's all have a happy holiday season.
To learn more about holiday consumer alerts, visit lacityattorney.org. Small business owners and entrepreneurs met online this week to learn about best practices in public procurement, business resources, and the basics of contracting with the City of Los Angeles during the Addressing L.A. Rise with Virtual conference. This year's event was designed to focus on resources specifically aimed at supporting small businesses impacted by the pandemic. Southern California Gas Company announced a partnership with the nonprofit Southeast Community Development Corporation in an effort to help equip students in South Los Angeles who need supplies, internet access, and tutoring. The donation from SoCal Gas will provide Chromebooks, noise-canceling headphones, internet hotspots, and access to one-on-one tutoring to 100 students from various schools that are still conducting remote learning during the pandemic.
Just as the holiday season is known for tidings and good cheer, it is also time that many battle with depression and anxiety. Add managing a pandemic on top of all that, and it can be a lot for some Angelenos to handle. Channel 35's Rasha Goel sat down with the folks from L.A. Medical Services to get tips on staying mentally healthy.
With stay-at-home orders and the holiday season here, there is a growing concern around mental health. Joanne O'Brien, City of Los Angeles Medical Services Division Administrator, and Dr. Laura Kokinda, Director of Psychology with the Medical Services Division, are both here to talk to us about the risks and how we can better manage our feelings of isolation and depression. You know, it's no surprise we've seen a growing number of cases with people suffering from anxiety and depression. But what are some of the symptoms and signs that we should be looking out for, not only for ourselves, but for the ones we love as well?
Well, I think one of the main things is just, are you seeing a big change in someone who you know? Are they suddenly more withdrawn or more irritable? You know, is it someone that you talk to quite a bit, and then you realize, hey, you know, it's been a few weeks since I've heard from Joanne. Maybe I should check in with her and see if everything's okay.
With the holidays being here, what are some suggestions you may have on how to maintain your mental health? Because I think already with COVID, it's really impacted a lot of people, but the holidays just don't make it easier.
Not at all. The holidays are always a challenging time for people. So in order to navigate them with COVID, with restrictions, what you want to do is think about what you enjoy about the holidays. You know, maybe everyone has a, you know, a Scrabble tournament or something. What's been fun? And then think about how can you move that to digital form? You know, it's time to be creative. Maybe you all make a new recipe that you found online. And each household makes the recipe, and then you chat about how it went.
Joanne, when we look at the resources that are available in our city, what are some of those resources?
For behavioral health, a lot of the resources are with the county. But I know there's links on the mayor's website, or even get on the Department of Behavioral Health with the county. And they do have access to free behavioral health and also sort of support groups. So there is help out there, and you just sort of have to get on your computer and look for it.
We hope that you stay safe, healthy, and well.
The holidays can sometimes be open season on the consumer. Angelenos can always count on city attorney Mike Fuhr to keep a watchful eye out for fraud and scams. But there are some who've spent their entire career watching the consumers' back. Watchdog, radio host, and business reporter David Lazarus zoomed into the Channel 35 studios to talk about his career and commitment to keeping consumers in the know.
I became a consumer columnist when I was still at the San Francisco Chronicle. And it was very clear that not only was this something that I was extremely well-suited for temperamentally, but the passion wasn't fading. It was in fact growing. I do advocate on behalf of readers, on behalf of consumers, basically on behalf of the little guy. And I think that's valuable and sadly, something we see less and less of in journalism. In fact, I'm probably one of the last consumer columnists anywhere in the country. And there's a good reason for that. I write about our advertisers. So the fact that the L.A. Times stands behind me, and before that, the San Francisco Chronicle, is honorable and honorable. The culture has transformed quite a bit. You know, we've had so many different owners, it feels like, so many different publishers, so many different editors in the 14 years that I've been at the paper. But for the time being, I gotta say, Dr. Pat has been an enlightened and good owner of the paper. And I consider it a privilege to be at a company and in a newsroom with that much history and that much longevity and that much influence, not just in the community, but statewide and even nationwide. I think a number of companies have used the pandemic as a way to clean house on the one hand, but more often than not, what we're seeing is basically companies that are just improvising. They just don't know how to handle something like this. And since so many of our publicly listed companies are beholden to share orders on a quarterly basis, they all realize very quickly, uh-oh, we're gonna miss our numbers three months from now because of this, and we're gonna get into a lot of trouble with our investors. So that's why you start to see more furloughs coming up really quickly. And this is a real good example of the American capitalist system today. And that is, it's all very short-term thinking. So a lot of companies look at it as, okay, how do I protect my bottom line for the next three months? The reality is, if you don't treat your customers well now during a time of crisis, they're not gonna be there for you at the other end of this. And anytime I embark on these issues, I hope readers can see my passion, because it's legitimate and it's sincere.
Our feature story this episode puts the focus on World AIDS Day. Dr. Gregory Taylor from Keck School of Medicine of USC talks to Channel 35 about HIV/AIDS, the treatment, and prevention of this virus as the world remembers those lost.
He came around and says, you got a... You know, I said, stick me on you. And I asked him where it was, and he said AIDS.
Human immunodeficiency virus is an organism that likes to attack humans' immune system. And when it attacks your immune system, it increases your risk of infection and certain types of cancers. AIDS is a condition in which your immune system is so low that it predisposes you to infection and can actually end your life. All types of people can acquire HIV. It depends on your risk factors. For example, if you have unprotected sex, that's one way to acquire HIV. If you have or use dirty needles through IV drug use, that's another way you can acquire HIV. You can also acquire HIV, again, through blood products from needle sticks. You can also acquire HIV if it's transmitted from your parents, particularly your mother, through breastfeeding or vaginal delivery. There are several treatments for HIV/AIDS, and that's a very exciting part of research that is going on currently. The most effective way to prevent HIV is really from abstinence or abstaining from sexual activity or bodily fluids. In terms of treatment, the best way for treatment is through combination antiretroviral therapy. Those types of medications have decreased the transmission of HIV tremendously and are recommended as first-line therapy for treatment and oftentimes for prevention of If you need more information about this topic or any other topics, please feel free to visit us at keckmedicine.org. We'll be happy to answer your questions anytime.
Watch international film shorts online. Take in an online tour of historic El Pueblo, or have a digital hangout with an award-winning author. All this up next on Virtual Things to Do.
Los Angeles Public Library invites you to their online event entitled Your Author Series. Come hang out with Tori Maldonado, a teacher and author whose critically acclaimed middle-grade novels, Secret Saturdays and Tight, appeared on the New York Times list as one of the 14 anti-racist books for kids and teens. Listen as Maldonado tells how his stories mirror his and students' experiences and are honored for realness and universal themes.
We invite authors, both children's authors and illustrators, and young adult authors and illustrators, to come and talk to us about the writing process, and they became inspired to be authors or illustrators.
Log into Your Author Series featuring Tori Maldonado, Friday, December 11, beginning at 4:00 p.m. For more information, visit the calendar section of lapl.org. El Pueblo Historical Monument is offering free facilitated digital tours for the duration of the Mayor's Safer L.A. Initiative. The current tours include exploring the America Tropical Interpretive Center and the founding of Los Angeles and a general history of El Pueblo. Enjoy an experience that is kid-friendly, informative, and fun. For more information on the El Pueblo Historical Monument online tours, visit elpueblo.lacity.org. New Filmmakers Los Angeles and the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences invite you to a virtual edition of the annual New Filmmakers Los Angeles Film Festival. This weekend movie event entitled Focus In will feature an international lineup of films by talented emerging filmmakers across three short film programs. The event will include virtual screenings, filmmaker Q &amp; As, and industry panels. Be sure to check out the New Filmmakers L.A. Virtual Film Festival, happening December 11th and 12th. For details, visit newfilmmakersla.com. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bilbao. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us on...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, December 8th. I'm going to call the roll.
Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield present.
Bonin.
Bonin present.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sidiel.
Here.
De Leon. Harris Dawson.
Here.
Corretts.
Here.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Councilmember Price. Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Rue. Councilmember Wesson. Eleven members and a quorum, Madam President.
For a start of our business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Buscaino moves and Mr. De Leon seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Krikorian moves and Mr. Sidiel seconds, next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Corretts, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, sir?
If I can get myself unmuted, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Members, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order, next.
Additionally, Madam President, there is a request from a council member to receive and file item number 24.
Okay, without objection. That will be the order, next.
Items 1 through 18 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 19 through 44 are items for which public hearings have been held. For item 28, a Budget and Finance Committee report, both a majority and a minority report, have been uploaded to the council file number 20-0600-S84. The majority report is before council. Items 45 through 57 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, members, those items are now before us, without objection. Anyone wish to call any of these items special? Mr. Bonin?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to call item 28 special and let the clerk know I do not see the reports online.
Thank you, council member. We will check. I believe they are having technical difficulties uploading it at this point. I will make an announcement as soon as it's online. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call that one special, please.
Do you have any other? Is there an amendment to the item 28 or is it comments? Mr. Bonin?
No, on item 28, I'll be moving the minority report, but I assume Mr. Krikorian will be moving the majority report.
All right, thank you. Mr. Blumenfield?
Yes, I have two very technical amendments. One, so I'd like to call items 39 and 52 special for technical amendments.
Okay, items 39 and 52 special for technical amendments. Why don't we start with the first one, item 39?
Okay, item 39 is a street vacation issue, came through committee. There was a clerical issue, literally the month is wrong on a reference. So it would change, it would move that item 39, recommendation number two on the agenda, be amended to read, "Request the BoE not issue the R permit until all conditions provided to the applicant by the BoE in their June 16, 2020 letter to be completed." It says July, it needs to reference the accurate one of June.
I'll second that, no brainer.
Second by Mr. Buscaino, next one.
And the second one is on item 52, also a technical amendment. This is an item that deals with creating some parking spaces for the Bridge Home in my district, but there were some technical issues that needed to be changed. And so it would say, "I move that the matter of the consideration of the motion relative to the lease and license agreement with L.A. Family Housing for the use of parking spaces at Bureau of Street Services facility located at 7453 Canoga Avenue," item number 52, "be amended to include the following conditions: The parking spaces will be provided at no cost to L.A. Family Housing. The agreement shall be revocable with or without cause by the city on 30 days' notice. And three, the term of the agreement will be for five years to run concurrently with and subject to the terms and conditions of the lease for the Bridge Home site." Again, this is not a substance issue. This was a legal issue that we had to make these clarifications.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell. Any others, Mr. Blumenfield?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for introducing this important motion under item 51 to report back on the city's and DWP's ability to manage the governor's plan to phase out gasoline vehicle sales by 2035 and how it will impact disadvantaged neighborhoods and low-income communities. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment. Given that there are a number of more aggressive dates being proposed to phase out the sale of new gasoline-powered vehicles, including by the city of Berkeley as early as 2025, and that the automakers seem to be in a race to get there first, I'd like to amend the report to also include the years 2025 and 2030 so that we're not cut unprepared in case the timeline escalates.
Happy to accept that as a friendly, sir.
You?
Any others?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. De Leon?
Hey, Madam President, also file item number 51, just comments when we get there.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear you. What item?
Madam President, thank you very much. Also file item number 51, just comments when we get there.
Comments on item 51. Thank you. Any other items, Mr. De Leon?
No, thank you, Madam President.
Members, any other specials? Okay, see, now, Madam Clerk, which items are we prepared to vote on?
Madam President, council may vote on items 19 through 27 and 29 through 44 at this time.
Could I just prepare to vote on these items? Items 19 through 27 and items 29 through 44? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
As amended, correct?
Yes, sir, as amended.
Number 39, yes. Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield aye.
Bonin.
Bonin aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiel.
Aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
And O'Farrell.
Aye.
Aye.
Wesson. Thank you, 13 ayes. These items are adopted, and item 39 adopted with the technical amendment.
Thank you, go ahead. Why don't you read the calling information so we can start up our public comment, followed by the city attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. And for the record, the technical difficulties have been resolved. And for item 28, the Budget and Finance Committee reports have been uploaded to council file number 20-0600-S84. And for public comment, as indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. Finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number, press star 6. And again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak.
To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please speak on the items first before providing general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or against re-off topic, the president will cut you off and you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We will take 40 minutes total of public comment in this first public comment period. A second public comment period will be provided later for items on the special agenda only. Those are items 58 through 61. Right now, during this first comment period, the items that are open for public comment are items 1 through 18, 28, and 45 through 57. That's 1 to 18, 28, and 45 to 57. Finally, for members of the calling in, members calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you're live in the council meeting. If you're also listening on another device or computer, please turn down the volume immediately. And as soon as you hear anyone on the phone, please press star 6 to unmute yourself. There's a slight time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, so if you listen only to your devices and not to the phone, you may not hear us for a while, and we may not think that you're still on the line. So please keep your ear to the phone to press star 6 as soon as you hear someone address you. We're ready to take public comment, Madam President.
Okay, just go ahead and take the first caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1767, please press star 6.
Good morning, council. This is Commissioner Shirley Friedman, California State Commissioner. I'm addressing 28 and general response to last night's meeting with the finance and budget that Mr. Krikorian was chairing. As a businesswoman, I was thinking about the financial difficulties that the city of Los Angeles is in right now. I know that the city owns quite a bit of abandoned properties, like the one on Oxnard Street here in Van Nuys that Building and Safety used to be in. Pretty big piece of property. I think it's probably worth a couple of million dollars. If the city would put up these properties for sale, I think that we could get some of the budget crunch taken care of. These are properties that the city is not using. They're abandoned, or parking lots that are not, are overgrown. And I know as a businesswoman that if we have a financial problem, we sell something to meet our cash flow. Maybe this would help the $300 million budget crunch that we could try to eliminate, and then keep our cops, keep the shelters open, keep all the programs that we have that the public needs now more than ever with the COVID situation. I hope that the council will look into that, see what properties are out there. There are developers that would be willing to pay top dollar to the city to develop these properties. They are big pieces of parcels, all over, San Pedro, Van Nuys, Sun Valley, downtown L.A. I know there's quite a bit. So please look into it. Maybe we could eliminate some of our budget problem by getting rid of these abandoned properties. Thank you, Madam President, and I look forward to seeing some results to help our financial crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 3318, please press star 6.
Hello?
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, this is Richie Sержenko. I would like to speak on item 28 and general public comment, please.
Sure, you have a minute for each. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to call in and say, you know, People's Budget L.A. Coalition came in earlier in the summer and basically said, you know, this is, we had 24,000 survey responders saying that they wanted to defund the police. And from what it looks like right now, the city council does not want to do that. You know, Nury, you know, you felt compelled when Dr. Molina was giving you the presentation in front of council, and you and Molina connected about how you are mothers, but yet, you know, when it comes time to actually make changes to the budget and cut the LAPD budget, you know, city council, you are afraid to do so, and you are afraid to reopen those contracts to the LAPPL. At a time when we're facing hundreds of million dollars of deficit in the budget, this is the largest budget line item. And I'm surprised to see what happened last night when, you know, the council members, Krikorian, Corretts, want to go against the CAO office recommendation for the cuts to the LAPD. Why don't you all bring People's Budget L.A. back to the table? Why is the budget process so opaque? We need participatory budgeting. And, you know, it kind of seems like calling Black Lives Matter L.A. and People's Budget L.A. Coalition in to give that presentation in the summer, it just seems like it was for show, and you all don't really care about making changes in Los Angeles. And yesterday, when I was on the call with Budget Finance Committee, I heard a lot of people talking about what, you know, potential cuts to fees could mean. But these people don't have personal experiences, please. I will tell you what happened on Sunday in front of Mayor Eric Garcetti's house. The police ran across the street and brutalized protesters in front of the mayor's house. That's what $3 billion is going to. They attacked elders and children in front of the mayor's house. There's plenty of videos out there. And for you all to just sit there and not want to talk to them...
Thank you, caller. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0585, please press star 6.
Good morning, council. This is Michael from beautiful Sunset Square in CD4. I would like to make general comment and speak on item 28.
Do you have two minutes? Do you have one minute for each? Go ahead.
Counsel, your city is crying. It's crying out. You may have noticed, we have been on the street all summer crying for substantive change. This council does not seem to have the bravery to actually heed the will of the people. The people want fewer police. We want fewer of our tax dollars spent on police. We want fewer of the city's general fund going to settle lawsuits for our brutal police. We have made very clear, the people, what we want. It's time for you as our elected representatives to heed the will of the people with real action. Bonin and Price have submitted a minority report. This is the one that you need to take most seriously. The argument that the police are keeping us safer during these troubled times is a myth. I too was at the mayor's mansion, and I too witnessed violent, uniformed thugs racing across the street and beating nonviolent citizens with batons. I'm a taxpayer. I do not want my money going toward this. Counsel, I am urging you to start acting bravely, start acting righteously, and please heed the will of the people. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4024, please press star 6. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
I'm not a man, I'm a homosexual that God hates, but let me speak on all items, and I want to speak on the special that Kevin De Leon spoke about on my next time.
You have three minutes for the items, one minute for general, you can talk about the special items and special.
I already heard you say this stupid shit already. Shut up. Item 28, financial troubles. Oh, mother, aren't you afraid? Your city is crying out more indictments for influence, corruption, bribery concerning programs concerning federal and state funding, and false statements by the city attorney of a financial institute, RICO. There is sufficient evidence of threats by the LAPD surrounding the mayor's office to... surrounding the mayor's office to protect that little bitch. It is significant, absolutely planned within the city's large scale of overdevelopment. I'm talking about development projects, you fucking homosexuals. The indictment I'm referring to is based on what, Jose Luis Weezar? Pattern and practice of corruption and that other jackass with the Building and Safety who got busted recently from the mayor's office, Mr. Raymond. In addition to all these large-scale development projects, geographically, niggers like me don't get housing. We're misinformed and we're misled by LSA and other agencies regarding the guarantees, insurance, of low-cost living and rent control. So the allegations in my introductory, I demand they be immediately filed. For the record, the city government has received more than $10,000 per fiscal year in funds from the United States, including for years of conspiracy to form criminal corruption by grants, contracts, subsidized loans. You hearing me, asshole? Write it down! Guarantees, insurance, and other forms of federal fucking assistance by that fucking punk-ass bitch Mayor Eric Garbage Garcetti. So each part of the city that approves these processes of low income and trading our fucking real estate to fucking developers, fuck Chinese! Fuck the Chinese with Mr. Jose Weezar that fucked this out of all this promised development and low-cost living. I'm tired of being a bitch, Nury! With my fat arms and my fat ass, it's difficult to live in the Cowboy 19. I struggle to understand why, under the case of Miller versus Johnson, 1995, the fight is based on race discrimination, you fat cunt! And as far as you, stupid Herbie, you're not done. You need to go for a mental evaluation immediately as I take control of the city to defend against the RICO enterprise. We, the United States District Court, and the FBI want to remind you, we are against organized criminals and the influence by those poor developed projects that you promised the public. So as the gentleman said earlier, mother, are you afraid? Are you afraid, mother? When you're on the train with little baby girls, are you afraid? You're not fucking afraid because you don't even ride the train as much as you claim, you stupid lazy people. Get out and walk! Get out and catch a train! Get out and catch a bus! Do something productive in life! Where am I with my time, Mr. Attorney? God hates homosexuals! God hates
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8420, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8420, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Astrid and I'd like to speak on, uh, item 28 and general public comment.
Can you have two minutes, one minute for each? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, I just want to echo what most people have been saying, uh, that people have been calling and crying on the streets for months straight in front of City Hall, um, in front of the Hall of Justice through downtown LA, um, all throughout the city, across the city, even in like random areas, uh, uh, to defund the police. Because we are livid and we are, as a brown person, I am not happy with having to live in fear of, um, my comrades being brutalized when we go protest. I just got back from, uh, protesting Eric Garcetti, um, with Black Lives Matter in front of his house and, uh, it's, every time I go to Garcetti's, I, uh, I, I never, you know, you just never know what's going to happen because the police, uh, they act irrationally and they deserve to, uh, they deserve to lose their jobs because their jobs are literally to brutalize people and abuse them. Um, and no, they are never held accountable. And that is just, that is just unacceptable. Um, this is not a society that is safe for brown and black bodies. And, um, it's 2020, like racism should not be a fucking issue in Los Angeles, but it is and it's all on your backs. Uh, you have the power to, um, to do the right thing, but you don't and it's really disappointing and people are dying because of it, like literally dying. People get shot and they die. And that is permanent separation from their family. And it's not only on the person that dies, but everyone who knew that person will experience loss and trauma because of that, because of the fucking police. Because you all are too afraid to stand up to them and defund them. Why not? I don't, I just don't understand, um.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7904, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 7904, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 7904, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5666, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5666, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 3100, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi there, um, my name is Mabya Girl, pronouns she/her, and I'm a member of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council, the treasurer, and also on the executive committee of the LGBTQ plus alliance of neighborhood councils. And I'd like to speak on item 28 as well as general public comment.
Do you have two minutes, one minute for each? Go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, I'm calling in today because I'm concerned about what I read in the second financial status reports for the fiscal year. I'd like to speak in opposition to cuts in specific departments, including the Department of Aging, Fire, Disability, and Neighborhood Empowerment. Due to time constraints, I'd like to address how cuts to the Department of Disability would directly and negatively impact vulnerable Angelenos. Uh, the verbiage of the proposed cuts specifically states that the department would make cuts from the AIDS prevention policies and would be unable to expand HIV prevention services to unhoused in other high-risk groups. We should not be making these kind of cuts that negatively impact vulnerable populations, especially without intense public input and scrutiny. Angelenos across the city are still demanding that the people's budget be put on the agenda and Angelenos are still demanding a more drastic cut to police funding, as exemplified by the police brutality witnessed at the Black Lives Matter Block, uh, Block Our City protests this past weekend. There is a $675 million shortfall in the city budget that could be amended by using LAPD funds and LAPD would still have over half a billion dollars annually. You are the most powerful city council in the United States. Please do something. Adopt the People's Budget LA and defund LAPD because Black Lives Matter. Thank you and I yield my time.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0899, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Stacy Dawson Sterns. I'd like to speak on item 28 and general public comment.
Do you have one minute for each? Go ahead.
I just want to reiterate what our, the last caller said, uh, better than I could. Bring the people's budget back to the table. You were fronting by hosting that in the summer. You were trying to get the heat off of you. You were trying to look, um, righteous, but guess what? You can actually be righteous. You can do the right thing. Your hands are so tied by the, the LAPPL. You're literally being controlled by a, a criminal organization, okay? Like Jamie McBride's daughter murdered someone. Jamie McBride's daughter is still on the beat. You're literally taking orders from a criminal family. You're taking the money away from Angelenos because the LAPL is unwilling, as a union, to bargain with you. But guess what? You have the power to make decisions, just like everyone's reminding you. Okay, we need money towards the people. If you, already it's disgusting, Nury, the things you put on the agenda. The things that are agendized show your priorities. But the priorities of, uh, Los Angeles are different than the priorities of this body. And pretty soon, your body is going to reflect what our bodies have been screaming for, which is justice, which is care, which is our money. Our money being put to the things that we want the money to go to. Our priorities are different than yours. But pretty soon, you're going to come to, you're going to come to us and you're going to lean into being human again. And it's going to feel good and you can be righteous instead of virtue signaling. We need resources, green space, food, child support, things like that. Uh, do I still have time?
Excuse me, Speaker?
Do I still have a little bit of time?
You have 30 seconds.
I am disgusted by every member sitting on this council who did not have the spine to step up and make a public statement when an elected official of Los Angeles was wrongfully arrested and attacked by police this Sunday in front of Mayor Garcetti's publicly-funded mansion. All of you should be ashamed. I've called on so many of you. DeLeon, where are you? This is Stacy Dawson Sterns. I am waiting for you to do what you promised me.
Thank you, Speaker.
Next caller.
Caller with the, uh, caller, call-in user number one, please press star six. Call-in user number one, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on, um, item 28 and general public comment.
Do you have one minute for each? Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'd like to echo the calls that, uh, others have made today. Um, for months now, we've been talking about defunding the police and diverting those funds where there are more, um, needed services, um, housing. Um, and, and it's really frustrating. You guys know this. We're here every single time that there's a council meeting and you guys pretend like you don't know what we're talking about. And, um, this budget cut, it, it's not adequate. You, we, there were over 900 cuts to the police department and it got cut down to 350 or something. We should have done more than 900. Why is that one department, that one line item, holding the entire city hostage? That's what's going on. And it's not just fiscally. As, as others have noted, they were out punishing and brutalizing protesters in front of Garcetti's, uh, this weekend. And not one of you, as Stacy said, had the courage to make a statement about that. Not even Ryu, who's a lame duck and has no reason to be beholden to LAPD anymore. But I do have, uh, an answer to those who are wondering why you won't speak out against it. And that's very apparent by the LAPL PAC spending. Monica Rodriguez, taken over 100,000 from them. City staffer B, John Lee, taken over 83,000 from them. Corret, taken over 56,000 from them. You cannot serve two masters. You cannot serve the people of Los Angeles and the LAPL. Defund the police, take that money, put it to all the other departments where there have been cuts. Listen to the people, I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1148, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 1148, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on all available items, please, and general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Thank you, sir. Uh, apologize to Ms. Autry Martinez. It, it's like we're talking to kindergartners. Start the meeting on time, Martinez. Wear your mask 100% of the time like the employees in there, Martinez. Not on your ear. Item number 18, Kukorian's educational facility, there's $12 million there. What's, wh- what's this educational facility about? I wonder. Item number 28, of course, the financial status of the, uh, city of Los Angeles, $600 million shortfall. The police weren't the ones brutalizing people out there in front of Garcetti's house. It was Garcetti. And the reason why those people, the people out there, don't want him in a cabinet position, we will not accept that butcher in a cabinet position. Defund the police is a joke, what you're doing. If you read these agendas, just the last week and a half, $600 million, uh, in one motion, 200, 600,000 in one motion, 200,000 in another, 750,000 last week, and 378,000, they are giving the police today. Item number 44 is just a different way of doing it, that's all. You want to save money in the budget process? Go to, uh, probably go to lacouncilfile.com. Lacouncilfile.com. Punch in item number, uh, council file 18-0675. Want to save money? These people sitting on the city council here have given sleazy Marquez Dawson almost $2 million in the last 18 months for luxury offices. He has a black Tesla city vehicle in front of his home. Why? Because we're out there picketing him. We're going to recall this guy. This is the theft, the butchery, the, the murder of people on furlough. People are on furloughs of the city. No, there's no money. Because these people, Dawson, Wesson, hi- his, his whole family gets $600,000, uh, six-digit salaries, including one working for Martinez. No, there's no money. You're giving it to the police? You're giving it to luxury offices for Dawson? The Vermont and Manchester move, the Fame Building move? The, he, $308,000 to take over the unemployment office? And 50, three weeks ago, 5462 Crenshaw, another luxury office move, $541,000.
And you can go on to general public comment if you wish, Speaker.
It, it's, it, thank you, sir. It's almost, you can't make this stuff up. I mean, a, a, a city writer couldn't make this stuff up. Dawson was picketed by some more grandmothers last, uh, last week. What does he do? Calls the police. They just happen to show up, huh? These are 80-year-old women. And he goes out and amongst them with no mask, trying to murder them, I guess. What kind of leadership do we have here? We don't. This is a criminal organization that vote trades. Kukorians and all these other votes will be yes votes today, 100%. It's the bedrock of Los Angeles sleazy council corruption.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press Caller Caller with the phone number ending in 4208, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 4208, please press star six. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Rob Quan. I'd like to speak on items 28, 47, 49, and general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the item, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin, Mr. Quan.
I think it's interesting that we're focusing on a fur ban when our current city services are unable to ensure that LA Animal Services can adequately care for the animals in our actual possession. Moving on to item 49, I think when it comes to the election, gotta give some talk for David Rue. Honestly, you know, if you gave me seven council members I could get rid of, I might have spared you. But, you know, you really did do yourself a solid by stooping so low during the campaign. But I do want to offer something to you. If you're willing to apologize to DSA LA and Ground Game LA, maybe you can get together with us and help us work on expanding the city council so that you can find a new seat. Councilmember Wesson, you know, I've grown to appreciate what kind of leadership he brought, even if it was a, you know, that Machiavellian thing. But I do think that, you know, that race should show you something. There was an assumption that all that money, being a known commodity locally, would carry the day. But people did know ya, and they didn't like it. This council should really heed these two elections and the implications. What kind of taint and stink is lingering from Jose Lizar and Mitchell Englander and John Lee and some other people yet to be named. For item 28, I think this item should be continued to next Tuesday. You know, you've done such a disservice to the public, city employees, and the other council members by Council President Martinez scheduling this for 12 hours after the item was heard and amended. They were being debated and amended through 9:00 PM last night. I doubt any of your staff and council members were paying attention to those deliberations. These amendments were not uploaded until after the 10:00 AM start of this meeting. I wonder how many of you actually read and appreciated those amendments? How are we supposed to have time to contact our council afterwards, is what I thought? No one should... And I think it's also worth noting that, you know, we can all ignore Councilmember Corretts's position against any layoffs. He's living in a detached reality that prioritizes nothing other than his campaign for city controller. But again, I just want to highlight what kind of horrible position your council president has put you in by having these extensive deliberations, you know, at nearly seven-hour meeting, and then these get scheduled the next morning, and you don't even have the reports publicly available. This is so wholly unacceptable. I don't know how the city attorney continues to ignore this. Thank you, Fabel. For general public comment, you know, I think it's worth noting something else that was discussed yesterday and is on the agenda tomorrow: reinvesting LAPD money in communities that have been disadvantaged by LAPD. We've waited six months for this, and it's a bunch of crap. And a bunch of the committee members highlighted what kind of crap it was, in that, you know, we got this promise of reinvesting in communities of color, and all we really got was taking, fittingly, taking LAPD money and converting it into glorified fourth-farrel spending. Herb Wesson and Nuri Martinez should be ashamed of themselves. This is... Alexis Wesson hopped onto the line last night to try to, you know, spice things up and present them. And, you know, that detached stammering incoherence was disgusting, but it also really fittingly represented the council president's leadership well, so good job there. I think that this council really needs to dig into this and evaluate whether this money actually does serve the purpose that it's intended. You know, when you take money from LAPD and say you're gonna invest...
Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in 1248, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Mimi. I'd like to speak on item 28 and give general public comment, please.
You have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Remember earlier this summer when you guys got the LM LA to present the people's budget? Was that just performative for you? Wesson, I remember you especially saying that you were so excited and optimistic, but nothing has come out of it. We've seen nothing from you. Barbara Keeley told you that we appreciate the sentiment, but we need to see action from all of you, and we've seen none. The people need to participate in the budget. It's our money and our communities. We deserve a say, and the people's budget is our voice. We need departments dedicated to housing, aging, disability, fire and transportation to have full funding. We cannot cut these vital services. Stop beating around the bush for why the cops get the most of the budget. We all know why, and it isn't for the benefit of the people. Take that money that is sitting there, put it directly into community-centered departments. If you want to see the city thrive and to actually end the housing crisis, put money towards care for the people. Care comes from stable housing, food, healthcare, financial support. The pandemic has exposed how awful this city is run and how much we are lacking in fundamental assistance programs. We need access to resources, and we need to keep our city and our people safe. Police don't help with that. The cops don't want support for the community because they know it'll make it harder for them to make things up and harm us, that it'll take money from this already massive overfunded budget. Budgets are a direct reflection of a city's priorities. The city has consistently spent more money to police, its people, and keep us incarcerated than it has in providing us with service or care. We spend $8 million per day on cops. Also, cops should pay for their own lawsuits out of their enormous budget. Why do we have to pay ourselves with our own money when they brutalize us? Our people are dying. We have the highest COVID records in the state. Homelessness is at a high. It's getting worse. Four homeless people die every single day. People need help, and instead of helping you, are actively choosing...
Thank you, Speaker.
Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in 1108, please press star six.
Yeah, hi. Daniel Gus, all items and general public comment, please.
You have four minutes. One minute for each. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. First of all, a shout-out to Rob Quan on every comment he made today. On target. You have this budget and finance meeting that goes on for a third of the day, and the things, the conclusions aren't posted by this morning or even at the start of the meeting, and you're voting blindly on things. Rob Quan, home run on every comment you made today, especially when you referred to Mr. Wesson as Machiavellian, which means cunning, scheming, and unscrupulous, especially in politics. And you are correct, Mr. Quan. That is why he got trounced 61% to 39%, and he won't even get a big send-off when he leaves next week. I like the man personally. He is Machiavellian. As for item number 47, Mr. Quan made a great point. Why is this item, which was resolved a year or two ago, still being tweaked? It's because we haven't done the job. Meanwhile, Mr. Corretts, you're ignoring the stray pop problem that's still going on outside of the South LA pound. You're ignoring the rat problem in Mr. Lee's district at the West Valley and several other pounds. You're focusing on something that should have been resolved two years ago with item number 47, and you're missing real, live suffering today. I'm happy to see changes on 47. Why are we still dealing with it all of this time later? And by the way, 22 a good idea, but it's a decade late. Regarding item number 56, are you kidding me? What event are you hosting at Barnes-Dole in the middle of a pandemic, when we can't eat outside, where the governor has this mandatory staying home? How tone deaf could item number 56 be? It's the same thing with item number 55. Downtown Mar Vista, what the heck is Downtown Mar Vista? And why isn't this money, even though it's for 2020 or 2022, why is this budget item, why is this not being shelved and put towards saving somebody's job, or the Spain Nuda program, or something else? Why are you promoting for two years from now, you're allocating money for two years from now, to promote Downtown Mar Vista? How tone deaf? It's almost as if Sheila Kuehl is on LA City Council. But what event are you funding at Barnes-Dole? The governor's telling us to stay home. So why are you spending money on this thing? Why? Because it's only a few thousand dollars? No, it's tone deaf, council members. You shouldn't be doing it. It's tone deaf. And for Ms. Martinez, I have had no response from Ms. Martinez's office. I guess I'm gonna go into my general public comment. Ms. Martinez's office has been non-responsive to homeless people who are trying to get into Project Roommate, who are trying to get into sustainable housing, who are trying to get into a shelter during the frigid weathers with and without their animals. Ms. Martinez's office has not been responding. So if Ms. Martinez's office doesn't want to respond, I will write a column, and I'll post it in City Watch, and it won't have the benefit of Ms. Martinez's explanation or her trying to do something about the problem. I have been vocal in trying to get help for these people. Ms. Martinez's office has not been responsive to the homeless people. What she says about homelessness so far has been all talk in her own district. Finally, council members, my new column on City Watch, Garcetti Investigations Stunted by LAPD Politics. I'm telling you, you have a major problem ahead. You have a major problem with Internal Affairs at the LAPD. Read this column, and this isn't the beginning of it. This is... There's so much more. There's so much more. Have a good meeting.
Caller ending in 2616. Yes, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
It's Eric Previn, and I'd like to speak on the agenda items as well as general public comment.
You have three minutes for the item, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Thank you, Fabel. It's Eric Previn. And what a lovely agenda. I'll start at the back with the track maps. We have in the House today 1133 South Hope Owner LLC, Sky Lexington LLC, Brentwood Luxury Condos LLC. Now, that one, I think they really get credit for saying what they're doing, which is really important in a pandemic. And also, Knowlton Place Homes LLC, Black Bay Investments LP, Nozar A Mohibi and Anna M. Mohibi. And then, of course, the Housing Authority of the City of LA. All gathering up today. There's a few more, but I want to get to the substantive comments. But I wanted to make sure that these... It's clear that these are being brought to you by this groups, these groups, this agenda today. And in terms of item 28 and LAPD funding, you know, this is an important message that's been, you know, conveyed in a lot of interesting ways. There've been astonishingly articulate public speakers. There've been, you know, protests in the streets and also near the homes of where the council people live. And it is compelling. It raises the question, why is the council retaining the same, you know, ideation when the public has kind of spoken loudly? Now, it's true that, you know, you can't... Nothing is so simple, right? But is it really so difficult to ask the LAPD to take a 3% cut, just like the other departments? Is it... Are they really special because, you know, have they been doing a great job? Have they been doing an astonishingly good job? Or have there been awful situations in department that have resulted in... People describe it as like an organized crime environment. I mean, I have been a guy who looks at the legal fighting, and Krikorian does an excellent job of sweeping things under the carpet as quickly as he can. But it's a festival of insidious retaliation, harassment, discrimination, and I hate to say brutality, but brutality. I mean, so we can't, you know, we can't ignore our past, and we have to move forward. The question is what to do. Certainly, we do not want to give control to Herb Wesson, who we finally got rid of, and to the civil rights organization to de-flavorize civil rights further. This body is not about Herb Wesson being a Machiavellian guy. He is. But it's about the people who don't stand up, the Bob Blumenfields who refuses, who shrugs, Paul Corretts, who shrugs in the corridor, Curran Price, who shrugs in the corridor when the public is disenfranchised. You need to meet Fridays. You need to allow the public into the process. The budget hearings this year, I'll just say it because 2020's almost over. What an astonishing, abhorrent, humiliating failure on the part of the budget committee to have held so few meaningful meetings, and then to insult the public with a seven-hour filibuster before even posting the stuff. I mean, other speakers have made it clearer than I can. But it's a failure. It's a terrible failure. What has to happen is the public should be... We should have more meetings, and they should be carefully and simply agendized where people can inform you of what's happening. Because you're currently ignoring it. It hasn't gone great. It's not your fault that the pandemic happened, although there's a lot of questions about why, for example, the LA Marathon has been ignored when it went o-forward in the face of obvious signals. And now, we face small businesses and restaurants, the people who feed our children are going out of business. And, you know, the best we can come up with is Corretts wants to make sure the $611,000 conduit pipe is permitted quickly on special notice. I don't know. I really think that we have to get rid of Mike Cure, and he can't run for mayor. He has to realize that at this point, he can't be appointed AG. If that happens, then I'm afraid they're gonna storm through you all.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, members, that concludes public comment for today's meeting, or I should say, our regular meeting. Members, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on the following items. Let's go ahead and vote on items 1 through 18, 45 through 50, and 53 through 57. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President. And before I call the roll, if I may announce regarding items 8 through 13, the street lighting districts, the public hearing is now closed for those items, items 8 through 13. The tabulation of ballots shall take place in space 300 of 555 Ramirez Street on Wednesday, December 9th at 10:00 AM. To access the live stream, join Zoom meeting ID 95386284393, pass code PROP218. The ballot tabulation results will be announced on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Huskayeno?
Aye.
Sidio?
Aye.
DeLeon?
Aye.
Harris Dawson? Councilmember Harris Dawson?
Aye.
Corretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
13 ayes. These items are adopted.
Rue, aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Rue. 14 ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item 52. This was amended by Mr. Blumenfield and seconded by Ms. O'Farrell. Let's go ahead and vote on that item as amended. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Huskayeno?
Aye.
Sidio?
Sidio, aye.
DeLeon?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Corretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
15 ayes. This item is adopted as amended.
Okay, let's move on to item 51. There was a friendly amendment offered by Mr. Corretts, which I accepted. And Mr. DeLeon, you call this special for comments?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam President, as well as colleagues. I read the motion... Um, I I read the motion this morning and looking forward to the report back from the DWP. A couple of things I want to add, uh, which I think is very important, um, because I think the spirit is with regards to equity, uh, to making sure our most marginalized and most vulnerable communities, whether it be Pacoima, Bull Heights, or elsewhere, um, have an opportunity to access the latest, the greatest, the most innovative and greenest technologies. Because I think, um, you know, hearing uh comments from you, Madam President, as well as others, I think you're right on target uh with regards to meeting our very ambitious um climate target goals. Uh, we need to make sure that those who have the highest financial wherewithal or the highest highest educational attainment aren't the only ones who have access uh to either an energy-efficient home, uh distributed generation, rooftop solar, uh whether it's a battery storage, uh or whether it's a Tesla in a charging station, you know, in their own personal residence. And in fact, that we democratize the benefits of our climate change policies and make sure that everybody, regardless of their zip code, regardless of uh the color of their skin, and yes, their legal status, have access and are able to participate in reducing uh their greenhouse gases or, you know, whether it be carbon dioxide equivalent, NOx, particulate matter, two-point-five ozone, especially because we have so many freeways in uh many uh communities, such as yours, Madam President, mine, as well as a few other uh uh colleagues, uh where you have a large concentration of people of color, and and we have a large concentration of poor people. And of course, we know that a lot of uh our children breathe into their lungs that that poisonous uh toxic fumes that are emitted uh from those tellpipes uh every single day, twenty-four seven. So I'm looking forward to the report. One thing I want to make very clear, I think, for DWP is a very clear understanding of what's going to take from the folks, the good folks at DWP, to upgrade and modernize our very antiquated uh grid, which means modern and smarter inverters, because ours, quite frankly, are are deeply uh antiquated. They're quite old. The question is, will DWP step up and meet the challenge uh with regards to modernization and as a result, create real tangible jobs, but are able to meet our overarching goals? Now, SB one hundred, that puts us on a pathway to one hundred percent clean renewable, zero-carbon energy, is very clear that uh DWP as a municipally-owned utility, the largest of its kind, has to step up and adhere to the law. So as we move clean electrons, whether it's wind, whether it's whether it is renewable energy such as sun as well as wind, or whether it's some other zero-carbon technology to be created through innovation, that DWP are actually moving clean electrons on our grid. So as the demand for electric vehicles increase higher, because they will, it's etched in stone. We're going in that direction. That DWP is able to meet the challenge, not just meet the challenge, but they must meet the challenge, because it's the law of the land. So I'm looking forward to what uh DWP actually prepares for us in terms of meeting those goals and those demands, and how we as elected officials and policymakers make sure that we democratize those benefits. So with that, I just want to make a that comment, and uh thank you very much, uh, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you again for bringing this forward. Uh, I agree with you and uh Mr. De Leon that this has absolutely has to be done with an eye towards equity and can't just be limited to those that are affluent. Um, I think it's also important that while twenty thirty-five is a step in the right direction, um, there seems to be a growing consensus that in the next ten years, possibly less, most if not all of the actions that can be taken on climate change need to be taken if we're actually going to save our world from uh the worst possible outcomes. Um, and so it is important that we look at the earlier dates as well. Um, twenty thirty-five, uh, I think is is leadership now, but in a few years, I think we'll look at it and say twenty thirty-five is just not soon enough. So I appreciate you accepting as a friendly amendment that of preparation or consideration for for those earlier dates as well.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I certainly want to speak in support of this item. Uh, just a quick comment, um, following up on Mr. De Leon's uh points with regard to grid reliability and DWP's commitment to clean energy. Um, of course, for many years now, uh pursuant to this council's direction, uh, the DWP has been preparing the blueprint to get to one hundred percent uh clean energy. Uh, the largest municipal utility in the country to make that commitment and uh and is at a point now where the working group will be releasing its uh recommendations uh and options as early as uh the beginning of twenty twenty-one. So we're we're very close after many years of working with the National Renewable Energy Lab to actually have not just rates and dates, not just a deadline and a goal, but an actual blueprint for how to get there and what, um, as Mr. De Leon said, what physical infrastructure needs to be uh changed, all of the things that need to be done to achieve that goal. And uh, once we're there, I believe DWP will be the the leader in the entire nation uh with regard to clean energy, and that, of course, is what enables the benefits of electric vehicles. So um, stay tuned, uh, colleagues, because uh it will be just a a matter of months before that will be before uh the council.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item as amended, so go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Huskayino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, this item is adopted as amended.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and revisit our regular meeting and move on to our special meeting. Can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Huskayino.
Here.
Sidio.
Yeah.
De Leon.
Here.
Harris Dawson.
Present.
Coretts.
Here.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Here, here.
Thank you. Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
Wesson.
Here.
Fifteen members and a quorum, Madam President.
Could I just go ahead and run through the agenda?
Would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order.
Madam President, there is a request from a council member to receive and file item sixty.
Without objection, that will be the order.
Items fifty-eight and fifty-nine are items for which a public hearing has been held. Items sixty and sixty-one are items for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, those, uh, without objection, those items are now before us, members. Are there any specials, Mr. Sidio? Mr. Sidio?
Item sixteen. Yes. Did you get that, Madam Chair?
I didn't hear you. You were muted.
I'm sorry, item sixteen.
Okay, item sixty. For comments?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, any other specials, members? Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and um, we're going to move on to public comment. Why don't you go ahead and um, read the calling information, followed by your city attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment for items on the special agenda should call six six nine two five four five two five two and use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number, press star six.
So for members of the public calling in to speak, uh, when we read out your identifying information, please press star six immediately to unmute yourself and tell us which items you want to speak on. The items that are open for public comment are items fifty-eight through sixty-one only, be- because this is a special meeting, there's no general public comment. You'll have up to one minute per item uh to speak. Um, and again, please turn down the volume on any other devices as here, as soon as you hear your identifying information called out, and press star six to unmute yourself. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take the first caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in five six 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 six, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm calling with the uh, from the Hillside Villa, I'm a Hillside Villa tenant. And the reason I'm calling is, um, basically, I would like for um you guys to support uh Councilmember Sidio in his uh, urge to use a uh, use the CARES Act. So this is the situation here.
Erica.
There are about, there's a hundred and twenty-four units, hundreds of people who are facing homelessness. It's been expressed that maybe we have not been affected by COVID, but we all have. We are dealing with a lot of anxiety. This is our third year going against this uh uh rent crazy rent increase here at the Hillside Villa. I lost my job of seven years with the Walt Disney Concert Hall. My husband has lost both of his jobs. We are barely surviving because of COVID. It is absolutely tremendous. The stress, emotional stress, the anxiety we are going through is unmentionable. So for um, for item special number sixty with this COVID CARES Act, you know, you have a very limited time to use this money. And if you don't use the money, you will lose the money. So right now, we're suggesting that you put that money in an escrow account, you move forward with eminent domain. We need you to sa- save our homes. We're talking about senior citizens and children and disabled people like me, who have been living with age of thirty-six, possibly becoming homeless come come this February. So I urge you, please support Sidio in this effort. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in three three one eight, please press star six. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yeah, this is Richie Sergenko. I'd like to speak on item sixty, please.
Sure, you have a minute. Please begin.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to call in in support of Hillside Via. Um, you know, you all are very close to to completing this this deal and doing right by these people. Um, you know, I think you all should continue down this path and help Hillside Villa, Hillside Via. Um, you know, during a pandemic, we need housing to survive COVID. Um, tenants have have lost jobs, have sick family members, and their lives have been impacted. Um, you know, city council can choose to spend this money uh through, you know, if you don't use the CARES money, you'll lose it. There it's federal funds. Um, so you might as well use it in in support of Hillside Via for for agenda item number sixteen. If you don't use the forty-five millions by uh the end of the year, it will be returned to the federal government. Uh, why not just use those funds, allocate the funds to purchase Hillside Via? Um, it's currently the only proposal for spending this money. What else are you guys going to do with it? You know what I mean? Uh, would the city rather throw away forty-five million dollars than house a hundred and twenty-four working-class families forever? Um, I think the the cost-benefit analysis is clear. You're not going to spend the money on anything else. Um, so why not spend the forty-five million to, you know, shelter people dur- during during pandemic? Thank you.
Thanks.
Caller with the phone number ending in eight nine one nine, please press star six. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Uh, yeah, this is William McFadden, like to speak on uh item sixty.
Sure, you have one minute. Please begin.
Uh, yeah, I I just want to echo the previous caller. I think this is a no-brainer. I mean, it's it's federal funds that you're going to lose, so why not use it to help uh help these families and help people, you know, stay safe from coronavirus and get housed? Um, I think, you know, we we kind of got public comments cut short in the main thing, but this is all connected, right? It's all about priorities, what we want our our city to use. And what we've been saying is this is what we want you guys to use our money for. I know this is federal funds, but i- it speaks to a bigger priority. We want our council to help families like this. We want you guys to be doing more of this stuff, finding ways to spend the money that you have to help people and keep people safe. So I'm in full support, and frankly, anyone that votes against this should not be on this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in one one four eight, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in one one four eight, please press star six.
Speaker, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Which items would you like to speak on?
Uh, number sixty, please, sir.
You have a minute. Please begin.
Um, I'm uh, you know, torn on this. The uh, actually, the CAO office um uh recommends this uh, this is, says this is not an eligible use of these funds uh because it's COVID, and this was these uh eminent domain proceedings started before January. Uh, but just talking in general, I'll let the legal take care of that. But should the council be doing something, increase housing? Yes. Should have thought of that when you took Herb Wesson's lead and stole, just about stole all of the one-point-two-billion dollars of HHH funds, building units for five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars apiece, which is still going on. Dawson, Dorset Village, uh, in comparison, is about to put out a thousand people to raise up a luxury apartment complex on Slauson and Crenshaw. Uh, a thousand rent-controlled people.
Thank you, Speaker.
Yes, you're welcome. Bye.
Caller with the phone number ending in five four three six, please press star six.
Hello, can you hear me?
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Uh, yeah, this is Zach. I'd like to speak on agenda item sixty, please.
You have a minute. Please begin.
Okay, so as the other callers have noted, this is a no-brainer. This money will be lost if it's not spent. Um, if there are concerns about the CAO, I think we do what uh we've seen, you know, just go ahead, plow ahead with it and then worry about that later, but this is a no-brainer. These units can be purchased for lower than the cost of new uh new units, which are over five-hundred thousand. This is somewhere in the range of three-hundred thousand. Um, this is the kind of stuff that you guys should be doing, public housing. Um, there's absolutely no reason not to do this. Um, so let's please, I I'd also like to point out that we spend eight million dollars per day on LAPD budget. That's fifty-six million dollars per week. So I don't see why we can't do this for forty-five million, and that houses a hundred and twenty-four thousand, the fifty-six million is just used for brutalization. Thank you, I yield my time.
Caller with the phone number, phone number ending in zero two three three, please press star six.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, which items would you like to speak on?
Um, my name is Jeff. I'd like to speak on item number sixty.
You have a minute. Please begin.
Uh, hi, I'm calling in as a a business owner in Chinatown. I just want to say that I strongly support um purchasing Hillside Villa. Um, I think this is, as people have said, a no-brainer. Um, housing, uh, hundred and twenty-plus uh families. For cheaper than we can get it anywhere else almost, um, should definitely be top priority. I think this is an example of what should be pursued ceaselessly by the council, um, buying up any property that you can and instituting permanent affordable housing. We know that housing first is the best driver of the economy, whereas uh, elite funds, um, we know keep people in a cycle of poverty. You know, I want to talk about Forty-three, Fourteen West Adams, proposing to sell that property for eighty-nine five K for a fifty-five-year affordable housing covenant. We know that these covenants shed affordable housing year after year. Fifty-five years sounds like a long time, but as we see with Hillside Villa,
Thank you, Speaker.
You know, it's not forever. What we need is permanent affordable housing,
Thank you, Speaker.
public housing.
Caller with the phone number ending in four, zero, two, four, please press star six.
Can you hear me, Kant?
Which items you want to speak on, Speaker?
I'm on the special items, all items on special, Kant, regarding adverse action against the projects by advocating for or against the housing projects of developers typically hired by assholes, consultants, and lobbyists to assist in the guiding projects through development process and city departments to steal, including by interfacing with the city council's office that represents the district in which faggots, utos, queers, bitches, whores, and cunts and pimps are usually located. So under California Political Reform Act, you should learn to follow economic interests. Hear what the people are saying. Fill out your Form seven hundred, asshole, and report to the F B I because you should be under the influence of corruption, bribery, false statements to include a pattern and practice of corruption and criminal activity, you jackasses. Did you hear that, jackass? Jackass? Jackass?
Continue, Speaker, or we're going to cut you off. So let's move on to the next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in one, six, eight, nine, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in one, six, eight, nine, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in three, one, seven, six, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in three, one, seven, six, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, this is Claire Phillips. I'm an instructor at a number of private and public institutions, colleges in Los Angeles. I would like to speak on item sixty. I just want to commend you for considering and also demand that you use the CARES money to support the Hillside Villa. Affordable housing is absolutely essential. We've got it, affordable housing in this city. My students will not go on field trips with me downtown Los Angeles anymore because they are frightened. We have many international students who come to this city. Students from all around the country come to our premier universities. They're not going to come anymore. Los Angeles is a disaster, a complete and horrifying disaster. That means you ruin the economy for everyone when you don't put people in affordable housing. Los Angeles is going to see a tremendous fallout from this. Please, 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 use this money. It's ridiculous to send it back. You know deep down that this is the right thing to do. Everybody deserves housing. It breaks my heart. It makes me
Thank you, Speaker.
so sad to see what's happened. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in four, two, zero, eight, please press star six.
Hi, this is Rob Kwon. I'm going to speak in support of item sixty.
Sure, you have a minute.
You know, what you do do says a lot, but what you don't do says a lot as well. And a lot of people have said this is a no-brainer, but unfortunately, with our council president, the kind of thing she struggles with. You know, you can look at this or the vacancy tax. Two items that are no-brainers, that this council should have been hearing diligently so they could get moving on it as soon as possible, and the clock runs out on both of them. Truest thing ever said was when David Roos slipped up and called out the council president and said, hey, maybe if we didn't cancel all of those meetings, we could have gotten this done. It's really sad, and I hope you recognize that, you know, this broken process, broken leadership is only going to produce broken results, broken families, broken lives, and it's just going to continue. So please rectify all that. Support the Hillside Villa. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment for our special meeting members. Let's go ahead and vote on items fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty. I'm sorry, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty-one. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld. Councilmember Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscagno.
Aye.
Sedio.
Sedio, aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson. Councilmember Wesson.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes. These items are adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number sixty. It's called special by Mr. Sedio. Mr. Sedio, item number sixty.
Madam Chair and colleagues, thank you for this opportunity.
We can't hear you, Mr. Sedio. Turn up your volume just a bit. Hold on for just a second, Mr. Sedio. I think we lost audio. Give me just a second. Mr. Sedio, can you speak one more time? I think we lost audio on all of you, but just speak into the mic so I can verify that we can hear you.
Madam Chair, I am prepared to go forward.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Are we good?
Good. Yes, we're good.
Okay, Madam Chair, thank you, colleagues and Madam President, for this. I know this is an extraordinary matter, and we are in extraordinary times. But I think this is the most appropriate way for us to go forward. Let me note that on November thirteenth, there was a report from the C A O. And in part of that report, it was noted that there was approximately forty-three million dollars of unallocated C R F, the CARES funding. And that we all know that this money, unless it was encumbered and utilized, would go back to the feds, and that's been noted today. We immediately, in response to that, introduced a motion with respect to the Hillside Villa apartments and thought that that was an appropriate use and just about the appropriate amount, right on point. We actually need the forty-six million, but we can get that. And so we thought it was important for us to take advantage of that opportunity to make sure that we do not send money back to the feds and that we would go forward with it because it seemed consistent, and I believe it is consistent, with the other utilizations. So, for example, home key is one of the programs that gets talked about, and room key gets talked about in terms of appropriate programs. And I would say that this is, in essence, essentially the same, that there is some distinction made, that this is, this condition existed prior to the pandemic, but so did homelessness, and so did all the other conditions that we're trying to mitigate during this time period, density in my district, housing crisis, economic crisis. All those were also pre-existing to COVID. But yet, nonetheless, we've used the CARES Act to try to help us mitigate the impacts and the challenges during this time period. And so I don't think we have to wait until these people are evicted. I don't think we have to wait until they are put under more stress, that we can take a proactive action by utilizing these resources for that purpose. The rulings and the documents for which the C A O made their findings seem to be lacking for us. I, you know, suffered for the lack of what was the rule that they were citing or relying on. And I could not find a distinction that made a difference with respect to, as I said, the home key or the room key versus the tenants at Hillside Villa. In fact, if there's ever a moment to be proactive, I believe that this is the time. And so I find the reports of the C A O insufficient. Today, I'll be introducing additional motions. But I would, you know, ask that we reject the C A O's notice and that we move forward to encumber the forty-five million, six hundred and ninety-five dollars for this project. Let me say to you that this is a cost of about three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars per unit, that this will stabilize a hundred and twenty-four families, that people have already moved in, that this is probably one of the most cost-effective purchases that we will engage in, that this is a preventive action to prevent homelessness and more stress during this time period, that once we encumber the dollars, that then that is sufficient for us to meet our obligation to spend these dollars. And we simply have to, and as we have made public, simply make the offer on this matter to the owner. This comes from an appraisal from the City of Los Angeles. It's a fair market value appraisal. It's not a taking. It is distinct, and I think we should think about this. I know Mr. De Leon is dealing with the reclaim movement in his district, but I would offer this as an alternative, that there's a right way to do things, that there's the right thing to do, and there's the right time to do it. And I think this is all three of those. This is timely. This is the right thing to do, and this is the right way to do it. I've had experience advocating for matters that may seem inconvenient at times, but were the right things to do and ultimately were turned out to be the most appropriate thing. Finally, let me say that, let me say thank you to all of you, but let me also give you a warning. This is the first of many buildings for which covenants will expire. There are perhaps ten thousand units in the City of Los Angeles. We have to prepare for this. These ten thousand units in the next five to ten years will come up. We cannot afford for these to move from affordable housing straight into market rate during this climate. This will result in displacement throughout the city. Ten thousand units of housing, we're talking another forty to fifty thousand people who could be displaced. This is our first step. This is our first opportunity. We should seize upon this moment. We should not send money back to Washington. I ask that you reject the report of the C A O and that we move forward to make the purchase of this building using any and all resources, including the COVID funds available. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sedio. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, no.
For clarification, that was a no? Thank you.
It was a no, yeah.
Thank you. Buscagno.
At point of order, may I ask a point of order? Are we voting on the agenda item to receive and file? Or are we voting on a motion by Mr. Sedio?
The motion has not been made. He's indicating he's going to introduce another motion. We're voting on the item as scheduled.
Very good. Thank you very much.
To reject, I am asking to reject the receiving file. And so to vote no is the vote that I'm asking for, and to reject the analysis of the C A O and the request to receive and file.
So then you're making a formal motion because that's not what you stated earlier.
I can make that motion, yes.
Is there a second?
Second. So there's a substitute motion on the table?
Mr. Sedio, what is it that you're trying to do?
I'm trying to, this, this is being presented to us to receive and file. I am suggesting that we reject that. So I'm asking for a no vote. You, we are proceeding kind of perfunctory as if we just say yes to a receiving file. I am saying no to the receiving file.
Okay, you didn't make that clear because you didn't state an actual motion. So that motion's been made. Is there a second?
Once again, yes.
Okay, so Mr. Sedio, just to be clear, you're asking for a no vote as the item is agendized, correct?
I'm asking for a no vote under the
All right, thank you. Just go ahead and start again.
I have a question.
Mr. Blumenfeld.
Just to understand what we're voting, if we vote no on receive and file, then that keeps the C A O report what? It's just a report, so I don't know what this means.
It means that we reject the analysis and we reject the effort of the C A O to not move forward with these resources. The C A O has reported back to us that their belief that this is not an appropriate or timely matter, I disagree. I think you'll, I anticipate you'll disagree that this is an appropriate matter for us to receive and file. This is, in fact, a matter for us to take action on, and so I'm asking for a no vote, to reject the report of the C A O.
Yeah, and I'm happy to give you a no vote on this, and I think this is really a worthy project. I don't think the money is going to go back to Washington if we don't spend it, but because I think it will get spent, as the Budget Committee has outlined. But voting for a receive, voting to vote no on a receive and file does not create this project. All it does is rejects a report, but it doesn't create anything in the alternative.
I understand that, for which I will offer an additional motion, as I had indicated during my presentation.
Okay, so just to be clear on what we're voting on, and you're asking for a no vote on the report and file. I'm happy to do that. But I, just being clear that it doesn't actually, doesn't do anything other than say we don't like the report. Got it. Okay. I'm sorry for the clarification. I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were voting on. Thank you.
Okay, let's try this one more time. Miss, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Mr. Sedio is asking for a no vote on the receive and file on this item. Please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
No.
Bonin.
No.
Buscagno.
No.
Sedio.
No.
De Leon.
No.
Harris Dawson.
No.
Corretts.
No.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
No.
O'Farrell.
No.
Price.
No.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Oh.
Wesson.
No.
Three ayes and twelve noes. This item fails.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move, go ahead and adjourn our special meeting and return to our regular meeting.
And if I may call the roll for the regular meeting?
Go ahead.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscagno.
Here.
Sedio.
Here.
De Leon.
Here.
Harris Dawson.
Here.
Corretts.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price. Councilmember Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
Wesson.
Here.
Fifteen members present, Madam President.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to item twenty-eight. So, uh, members, um, we have the second F S R before us, and Mr. Rich Llewellyn, if you please come to the table, our C E O, C A O I should say, is here to provide a brief overview of the F S R and to answer any questions. But before we go to Mr. Llewellyn, Mr. Kerkorian, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you so you can say a few words, and then we can go ahead and begin with Mr. Llewellyn's presentation. Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much, Madam President. And, uh, members, typically, uh, we have F S Rs that come to the council and we don't engage in a lot of extensive debate or discussion about them. This is not such an F S R. Uh, this is an extraordinary F S R for extraordinary times, and I recognize that it includes many recommendations that are very, very difficult for, uh, members to, um, to stomach, and I'm among those. So let me just, before Mr. Llewellyn speaks to the contents of the C A O's, C A O's report and the committee's recommendations, let me just take one step back and put it into a context for you. A year ago, uh, this council, uh, this city had, um, was at the strongest financial condition that it had ever been in. Uh, we had surpluses in our budget that were larger than any surplus that the city had ever had in its entire history. Our economy, uh, was exceptionally strong and diverse. Uh, we were breaking all records for tourism, uh, for hotel stays, uh, for cargo through our port, uh, air traffic through the airport, business starts, um, in business gross revenues. In every way, um, things looked very positive. But then March came along and the COVID-19 pandemic hit, and we knew that that would change dramatically. And in fact, um, just to get through the last fiscal year, uh, when we saw the revenues decline at the end of the last fiscal year, uh, we needed to reach into some of those reserves just to get through the year. And you'll recall that at that time, uh, the end of fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, uh, the mayor proposed a budget that was a, an austere budget. It was a budget that none of us liked. Uh, it was a budget that included furloughs, for example, for our civilian employees. And it was a budget that we didn't like, but, um, you joined, uh, with, uh, the members of the Budget and Finance Committee in accepting that budget, given the reality of the fiscal situation that we were facing. And I said at that time that that budget, this budget process would be entirely fluid. We would have to be revisiting it on a very regular basis as the unknowables began to be known, uh, as we started to understand better what our revenue situation, how long it would take for our economy to recover, what impact there would be on our budget from massive unemployment and, um, other strains on the people of this city. And I said at that time we would have to continue to revisit it, and, uh, that proved to be an understatement, because it was just a few months ago that the Office of Finance told us that, uh, the revenues that this city was actually realizing in the fiscal year were falling well short of the lower revenues that the mayor had assumed in this budget. And at that time we were told, well, um, best case scenario, it'll probably be around forty-five million dollars short of, uh, anticipated revenues. Worst case scenario, it could be as bad as four-hundred million dollars.
All right, Mr. Kerkorian, it appears out of our phones are buzzing, there seems to be an emergency alert.
It's a COVID-19, uh, health alert.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
Appropriately timed, actually. Um, so, uh, so we were told that worst, best case scenario, forty-five million dollars short, worst case scenario, around four-hundred million dollars short, if you'll recall. Then about a month or two ago, uh, the C A O came back and said, well, it looks like it's probably going to be more like the worst case scenario, that we're going to have four-hundred million dollars in revenue shortfall during this fiscal year. This F S R that's before you has the updated, uh, information that in fact we are going to be around six-hundred million dollars short of revenue, of anticipated revenue in this budget. When you add that to additional expenditures that we've had to make this year because of COVID-19, um, that are so far unreimbursed, uh, we have about a six-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollar correction that we need to make in the already austere budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So that's the challenge that was before, that's before all of us. So the C A O was given the task to work with city departments to go out and try to find, uh, well, before I get to that, I just want to put that into a, uh, historical context for you. If you'll remember the Great Recession, when we, uh, were in a situation where people were talking about the city actually potentially facing bankruptcy during the Great Recession, we had one year where we had a significant year-over-year decline in revenues, one year only. That was in twenty-ten, when we had about a three percent, two thousand nine, uh, when we had a three percent decline in revenues year-over-year. Right now, we have a ten percent decline in our revenues compared to last year. So it gives you a sense of the magnitude of it. So the C A O was given the task of working with the departments to develop departmental reductions and to find other solutions. And so every general manager in the city was tasked with the idea of doing a, uh, a, an exercise to reduce that department's budget by three percent. Some departments were able to do that, some departments did not do that, some departments did it in a way, uh, that assumed things that the C A O disagrees with. But one thing is for sure, um, the departments are not being treated equally at all, and I don't think that any of us should be under any misapprehension that this three percent exercise, uh, achieved departmental equity or was even intended to, because every department came to this discussion from a different place. Some have already been cut, uh, some have endured significant reductions in their workforce because of the SIP that we authorized, or because of ordinary retirements, or for other reasons. Some have critical positions that need to be filled in order for the city to function that cannot be cut. So departments all come at this from a different place, and we should not expect as policymakers that we should treat all departments alike. They are not alike. Uh, but that was the exercise that the C A O, uh, assigned them to do. So what is before you includes the results of that exercise, the C A O's additional recommendations, and the committee's recommendations as well, uh, for addressing this challenge. And I'm going to ask Mr. Llewellyn to, uh, go over that and to respond to your questions, but I do want to just, um, kind of leave you with this final, uh, point. Among other things, we are talking in this, in these recommendations about authorizing the C A O to utilize two-hundred-and-fifty-seven million dollars in our reserve funds. So after we have worked, after this council has worked hard for eight years to save money for the time when we would need it, um, we built up that large reserve, we are now taking all of it, all of the budget stabilization fund, all of our reserve for economic uncertainty, everything other than our, uh, our charter mandated, uh, emergency reserve, basically our earthquake money, everything other than that, we are using to correct this deficit. In addition to that, this proposal, uh, suggests borrowing a hundred-and-fifty million dollars from MICLA, uh, in order to address working, uh, capital needs. Now that is something we had never, never been willing to do, to borrow money to pay for immediate service needs, but we have to do that now in order to address a crisis of this magnitude. There is no other realistic alternative. So after departmental cuts, after two-hundred-and-fifty-seven million dollars in, uh, in taking of, uh, reserve money, after a hundred-and-fifty million dollars of borrowing, we still have solutions, you know, a little short of six-hundred million dollars, so that we need to go further. And that is where we get into the discussion of, um, potential labor concessions, um, and potential layoffs, only after all of that other money is utilized. Now the vote before you will not be to lay off a single person. It will not be to reduce a single person's salary. None of that is before us. What's before us is a framework for how this city is going to deal with the reality that we face. So this is not a time for, uh, expressions of philosophy, this is not a time for finger pointing, this is not a time to blame our labor partners, um, or to blame anybody else. We are all in this fighting that one common enemy, which is the COVID-19 virus and the economic catastrophe that it has caused for this city. So, um, that's the position that we're in, and, uh, with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Llewellyn to give us an overview of what is in the F S R and, uh, also to comment on, you know, the, the issue of layoffs, which I know is of great concern to everyone on this council, uh, and to clarify, um, what the status of layoffs would be if the council proceeds with the F S R today.
Thank you, Mr. Kerkorian. Mr. Rich Llewellyn is in council, so do you want to go ahead and walk us through your presentation? Then I'm going to go ahead and, um, take, um, questions from members who are already on the queue. Go ahead, Mr. Rich Llewellyn.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you is our second financial status report with amendments from the Budget and Finance Committee. As we have been reporting this year and as the Chair just laid out, the COVID-19 pandemic has caused a budgetary crisis for the city. We now project that our revenue is likely to be six-hundred million short, and it could get worse. There remains a tremendous amount of uncertainty about how long the pandemic's impact will last, even with the vaccine news on the still-too-distant horizon. It's impacted all of our revenue sources, especially those tied to tourism, services, parking, and retail, and all face further downside potential. As just one example, just this weekend, the governor announced another sales tax deferral, which will impact us this year. We also have an outstanding seventy-five million dollar loan, as you know, from the Public Works Trust Fund, which has been front funding our COVID expenditures. Pursuant to the charter, we must repay that this fiscal year. That brings our gap to, as the Chair noted, six-hundred-seventy-five million. In this report, we present a budget balancing plan to address this shortfall. I want to appreciate the council president and the budget chair for asking for an overall plan instead of our traditional F S R, which is just a point in time, because it's important that everyone see the sort of whole menu of solutions to our problem. Through our plan, we are putting difficult decisions before you. Three percent reductions across all departments, which will have real service impacts for our communities, deferring a hundred-and-fifty million dollars in capital and equipment spending, again, real deferrals and real harm, using almost two-hundred-and-sixty million of our general fund reserves, borrowing, debt financing to finance operations, working with labor, our labor partners to see if there are additional concessions from our existing labor contracts, and most painfully preparing for the process of potentially laying off city workers. This is not a menu of options. We actually need all parts of the plan to cover the budgetary shortfall. The Budget and Finance Committee, through their amendments, also instructed my office, with assistance from other departments, to reduce, to review additional revenue options, additional reduction options, payment deferrals and balances in special funds. We'll be reporting on those options in a future report. Our report mainly focuses on the general fund. Still, we're also recommending approximately forty-one million dollars in cuts to special funds that will both help struggling special funds to regain balance and protect the general fund from further harm. I will discuss each of these aspects in more detail. Budget reductions, before you, we have just over one-hundred million dollars in general fund budget reductions, including fifty-two million in departmental reductions to meet the three percent exercise. The reports are detailed, the budget reductions are detailed in our report. Some of these are quote-unquote painless, such as making a little money on our interest payments. Most are painful. Additional COVID money is a positive. Uh, we do expect approximately twenty-nine million in additional FEMA reimbursements this year, and possibly having as much as forty million dollars from the remaining, uh, Corona Relief Fund by the year end, calendar year end. We do expect substantial additional FEMA funding in future years, but we don't expect it this year. Councilmember Buscayino, through his League of Cities, has been one of the leaders nationally in calling for additional and faster FEMA response, but we are not, we do not have more than twenty-nine million to count on at this time. We will continue, your council has instructed us, as long as the deadline stays December thirty, make sure there's no C R F money left on the table, and to make sure that we expend that money consistent with the C R F guidelines. If the deadline is not extended, we will do that and report back on that motion. There, as you know, though, and our report notes, the COVID needs continue, and there, we do not have a source for additional COVID funding at this time, and that will be a challenge we will face the rest of this fiscal year, from homelessness to renters to small business, all across the spectrum. In addition to the sort of slightly good news of FEMA reimbursements, we are proposing to use almost two-hundred-and-sixty million dollars of our general fund reserves. As the Chair pointed out, we are recommending wiping out our contingency reserve and wiping out the budget stabilization fund. These are painful recommendations. Your council, since the last recession, has built up those funds to help us prepare for the worst situation. Unfortunately, we are in it. We believe using them is a, may be a very painful but necessary response, but we do think it's important, as soon as we get through this pandemic, to start to rebuild them again, because they are what is helping us get through this year. And as you know, we needed the reserve fund to close last year. Debt options, um, you know, as the C A O proposing to use debt, borrowing to pay our day-to-day bills is very painful. Borrowing to build buildings, borrowing for long-term capital is a good use, borrowing to pay daily expenses is not. We've evaluated all of our debt options, and we believe that the only one we have for this fiscal year is using some of our MICLA borrowing capacity for budget working capital. We believe it's legal and it will provide relief this year, and as a one-time use in light of the pandemic, we believe it is an appropriate consideration. But to make that possible, to free up the MICLA money for some other purpose, budget balancing, we're going to need to cancel or defer almost just over one-hundred-and-fifty million in MICLA projects and equipment purchases. We recommend this, but again, it is very difficult. And we do believe that we should look to repay this borrowing as soon as possible because that frees you up in future budgets to do the work of the city and not just pay back debt. Finally, labor. In order to meet the three percent target, three percent reduction target, we identified four departments that could only achieve that target by the elimination of filled positions, the Police Department, the City Attorney, Animal Services, and the Bureau of Engineering. While the committee's proposed, committee's report reduces the number of potential layoffs in the Police Department, layoffs remain on the in the Police Department, layoffs remain on the table for each of these departments. We recognize the gravity of this recommendation. Each of these employees provides important service, and our residents need and will miss that service. We also understand that we are throwing upside down the lives of each and every one of these employees. Still, we do not see another way to cover the current shortfall. Unlike the other cuts we are proposing, we are not recommending removing budgeted funding for these filled positions from departments at this time. Instead, we are recommending a process, and the committee report recommends a process toward the possible elimination of filled positions. The committee report recommends doing that at the middle end of May. First and most importantly, we recommend that each of these departments, with the assistance of our office and the Personnel Department, work as much as possible to mitigate the elimination of these positions by trying to move these employees into specially funded positions. We have provided a list of such positions in the report. We're working to expand the list. We're also recommending hardening a hire freeze to create additional vacancies. And we have identified and will continue to identify opportunities to in-source work we are currently contracting at. Just as the Budget Chair noted, no layoffs will recur under our report, under the Budget Committee's report, until a final layoff proposal is presented to the mayor and council for adoption. We want to be clear that none of these four departments supports the proposed layoffs. I, we don't want to mislead on that. But to date, none of the four departments have developed alternative cost-cutting proposals we have reviewed. The City Attorney and Bureau of Engineering have asked for the opportunity to propose alternatives, and we recommend you ask them to do so within one week. In fact, BOE presented an opportunity, an alternative plan this morning, which we are just reviewing now. Still, if these departments are unable to prevent, present viable alternatives, we ask that the process proceed towards consideration of layoffs. In addition to layoffs, the city must work to continue working with our labor partners to seek other labor cost savings. As this committee knows, as this council knows, as the Chair pointed out, our labor costs did not create the crisis. Our labor partners are our partners in responding to the crisis. But the crisis is real, it's here. We hope that our labor partners will work with us to contribute to managing the crisis for their fellow members and for the residents of Los Angeles. Two final notes. We all hoped initially the pandemic would be short-lived. Unfortunately, this has not proven true. The impact on the economy has been devastating. Most of the solutions we propose are one-time, and most economists think that the economy will drag for much longer than one fiscal year. And finally, I know everyone on this council hopes Washington will do its job and pass stimulus legislation which directly helps state and local government. It appears from most reading that that certainly won't happen this week or probably before council adjourns for the recess. Still, we can't rely on that hope to balance the books. And unfortunately, the stimulus assistance they are talking about now will likely be way short of what we need to cover the budgetary deficit. To repeat, this is not really a menu of options. We need each of the options to try to close the deficit. As such, I conclude by urging your approval of the FSR as amended and adjusted by the Budget and Finance Committee. One clarifying amendment. I think Recommendation 29 in the committee report was intended to reduce or eliminate COLIS from outside vendor contracts, just to make clear what that was intended to refer to. And with that, I am here if there are any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Llewellyn. Let's go ahead and take Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Rich. And first, I want to thank my colleagues that serve on the Budget Committee for, I know they put in some long hours last night in, and combing over this FSR. But Mr. Llewellyn, I want to, I want to follow up on a couple of questions and motions that I had introduced previously with respect to backing out city staff that has served in the roles that would primarily be served by the county. We have, our budget has been impacted severely, as reflected in this FSR. And, you know, I understand in the initial stages of the pandemic, we were out there deploying our resources to try and get a lot of this testing infrastructure activated. When I also reflect on all of our disaster service workers, city employees that stepped into the roles that no one else showed up to do, even though it was their responsibility to do it, particularly so from the county. We are now living through the budget implications of providing that service, moreover, exacerbating the fact that our city employees still now have a growing backlog of work that they will have to tend to as a result of providing service of someone else's role. That said, I wanted to follow up because I still have not gotten any report back on my motion to withdraw those resources. I do know LAPD has withdrawn their roles that they were playing when they were serving in the capacity of what LSA should have been doing. But I don't believe that that is the case with the other city departments that have served in these roles, and there's obviously cost implications with that. That said, I also know that we are, you know, we're keeping, we're keeping notes on, very detailed notes on what are those expenditures are and what's associated with that. But, you know, aside from getting an understanding of when I can expect a report back in withdrawing our city crews from doing the work of county service workers, because the county's budget has not been impacted the way ours has. In fact, I had a conversation with a supervisor last week, and when I, when I discovered what their budget deficit was and that ours was substantially more, when they have two times, three times more budget than we do, it was an alarm for me. But is, are the dollars recoverable through FEMA with respect to the city workforce that we've deployed with the disaster service workers? And if so, when might we anticipate some recovery for that to help replenish what so many departments like BOE have front-funded in order to provide that service?
Thank you, councilmember. Two responses. We are tracking all of city expenditures. Some of them are FEMA-eligible and some are not. Your council has moved so far approximately $250 million from the Corona Relief Fund into the city's budget to address the city expenditures that are not FEMA-eligible. We are also spending, we are tracking every FEMA expenditure and expect to receive that. Unfortunately, FEMA, quite frankly, is a slow pay. So that will be over the next probably three years. So we do believe we are tracking and sort of billing the feds to the maximum extent possible. Your, your second point, we have not responded to your motion completely, and I apologize for that. We've been trying to get the FSR out. But the, as you know, the mayor's office with your council and the COVID committee has been sort of directing the city's response. The mayor's office has been working very hard to kind of reduce our city kind of spending on, particularly on testing, which was the sort of single biggest ongoing expense, by working with the testing vendors and trying to structure, restructure the use of city staff in that effort and, quite frankly, front-funding less testing and nursing costs. So they are, and they are expecting to report to your council early in the year about their plans, at least for the second half of the fiscal year, and what we have to worry about front-funding.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Llewellyn, for your presentation. Felt like a little bit of deja vu, as if I had just listened to it about 12 hours ago. Thank you, and your staff really struggled work on this. Before I say anything else, colleagues, I think it's really important to acknowledge Mr. Krikorian, because as ugly as this conversation is, as horrible as the choices are right now, they would be dramatically and significantly worse if it weren't for the prudent fiscal stewardship that Mr. Krikorian has insisted on over the past decade. We are, this is the worst budget crisis we have ever seen. I think about half of this council, in one capacity or as another, as elected officials or city staffers, lived through the fiscal crisis of a decade ago. This is worse. This is significantly worse than that. And it's worse because it's happening, not only are the circumstances worse, but it's in the middle of a pandemic, it's in the middle of a homelessness crisis. And it is unimaginable pain, and it's going to be unimaginable choices. And the reality is, we have not hit rock bottom. This ain't as bad as it's going to get. At every turn, every time we look at our finances, they're coming in less than our worst-case scenarios. And I don't think we can have any reasonable expectation that next year is going to be any better. We are, we are doing things, the potential, the act of sending out or preparing layoff notices gets all the attention. But we are doing a series of things in this budget than in any other year would be a hours-long debate over how controversial they are. The rating of our rainy day funds would be an incredibly controversial central question that would occupy us for a considerable period of time. And we're rating the rainy day funds. And the thing is, the forecast for next year is not clear and sunny. We are doing some really bad, frankly crappy, debt financing and borrowing that under any other circumstance we wouldn't be doing. So in this no stone unturned process, yes, we are also looking at the potential of layoffs. And that is something I think every member of this council wants to avoid. I don't think there is a single elected official in the city who wants there to be a single layoff. And I hope that's, that's where we get to, is we don't have to do that. And it's important to realize, we are not doing any layoffs today. We are not authorizing a single layoff today, whether it's the majority report or the minority report. We are not authorizing a single layoff. All we are doing is keeping that option open and preparing for the worst-case scenario. And it is a year we have all seen, 2020 is a year where most of our worst-case scenarios have been realized. So we need to be prepared for that. As I said, nobody wants layoffs. So this is, as we go forward and we look at the majority report, the minority report, the different options here, it's a question of how do we avoid the layoffs? So the first central question is, does LAPD have to cut 3% like the other departments in this exercise? And if they don't, what other agencies then carry the burden? Agencies that have done the CIF, that have had furloughs, that have year-to-year had deeper cuts, whether it's AEMD or H-SID or other departments or street services? The second central question is, if LAPD is held to the requirement of doing that 3%, is it going to result in layoffs or is it going to result in salary adjustments? When faced with really stark consequences in other departments, whether it was furloughs or cuts, other labor partners have stepped up, worked with us and helped out to make sure that we could avoid the least pleasant, the most unimaginable consequence. And I think that is what we need to have happen here. I'll be clear, I voted for the raises. Everybody voted for the raises. I'm not trying to hide the fact that I did. There's a lot of things I've voted for over the past couple of years that we can't afford anymore. There are traffic signals I want that we're not going to be able to afford anymore. There's Vision Zero stuff, there's homelessness stuff, there's renter protection stuff, there's a whole bunch of stuff that we have all voted for that we are now faced with horrible choices in front of us. This is not about being pro-police or being anti-police. This is about an unimaginably bad budget crisis. And if we can, this is about how we can avoid layoffs and who pays to make sure that we can avoid them. I know there are some who think that the police department should be sacred cows. You know, I think protecting our renters or our small businesses or our seniors or our homeless programs is also a sacred cow. And frankly, I think LAFD is a sacred cow. With wildfires going up, with climate change going nuts, with the public health crisis going up, the idea that we're looking at cutbacks there, to me, is unconscionable. That should be our sacred cow. So there is a majority report and a minority report today. Majority report, Mr. Krikorian can talk about. The minority report says, well, you can't talk about the minority report without mentioning the majority report. The majority report recommends that we reduce the number of potential layoff notices that Mr. Llewellyn recommended and ask the CAO to help find a way to make up that amount of money elsewhere. What Mr. Price and I have done in the minority report is say, that's fine, we all want to avoid the layoffs. Reduce the number of potential layoffs, but find that savings elsewhere within LAPD, so that that department needs to make the 3%. And we do that in part because it's a question of how we respond to a crisis. Every time, for the past century, whether it's local or federal, in a crisis, programs that help people, that help people who are vulnerable, get cut while government continues to reinvest at the federal level in military spending or at the local level in police spending. The Great Society got killed and gutted because we invested in the Vietnam War. In 1982, the arms race killed the social safety net in the Reagan administration. In the early 2000s, our investments in the war in Iraq led to the cuts in Medicare Part B. In 2009, 2010, the state, before it started looking at prisons, children's health insurance, public education, jobs programs. And in 2010, we in the city grew, literally grew the LAPD while we cut everything else. And we have to ask, are we ever going to break that cycle? And I would say this is, this is the time to break it, because almost to a person, everybody on this council earlier this year lamented the fact that we have asked LAPD to do everything. That we have asked them to respond to homelessness. We've asked them to do this, we've asked them to do that. And the reason we have done that is because decade after decade, generation after generation, crisis after crisis, we have cut everything else other than that. So if we're ever going to break the cycle, if we're ever going to sort of tip the budget scales to say we need to put our weight into preventing problems and not just responding to them, I think that time is now. So we're not doing layoffs, we're just keeping that option on the table. I would move the minority report today to make sure that we are not asking other departments to take on LAPD's share. And that would be my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second on Mr. Bonin's motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Price. Thank you, Mr. Bonin and Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to thank you, Rich, for your, your hard work on this, you and the team. You guys have really made the best of a bad situation. So I just want to say thank you. And a special hats off to our Budget Chair, Mr. Krikorian, who yesterday and last night, along with my other colleagues on the committees, worked hard in developing the recommendations that are before the council today. Of the many recommendations for the FSR, there are only two that we disagreed on. Most significantly, most significantly, what should be done with the LAPD budget. That doesn't mean that we want to see layoffs, civilian or personnel, but we want to see a shared sacrifice across the board. a shared sacrifice across the board. If we're going to say to the city attorney, or animal services, or BOE, that you didn't make the 3% cut, so we're going to move forward with your layoffs, but LAPD, you don't have to meet the 3%, and the CAO will find the money elsewhere, I just don't think that's fair. These are unprecedented times, and we're facing a global pandemic. An intercession has left us, as we've heard today, more than $365 million in the hole. And while we do have hope that the new Biden-Harris administration will provide some relief, I don't think we can expect it's going to come soon enough, and it's going to be enough to wipe out that entire deficit. We need to make difficult decisions, and we need all the unions involved. We need to come back to the table to discuss real cost savings, and to delay the pay increases and bonuses that were agreed upon before the state emergency. If that were done, we could avoid these potential layoffs, and we could solve a large chunk of that deficit. So I'd urge my colleagues to vote for the minority report, to send a message to our entire city family that this is a crisis, and we need everyone to step up to the plate. And when we say shared sacrifice, of that we mean it. Also, Madam President, I mentioned there was a second, the recommendation that the committee did not agree upon yesterday, and that's the recommendation 31 before the council. I made the motion yesterday to change this to a report back. I'd like to make that motion again today.
Go ahead. So your motion is to change recommendation 31 to a report back?
That's correct.
Okay, I will second that for you. Do you have any others?
That's all, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Mr. De Leon.
Thank you much, Madam President, as well as colleagues. I also too want to add my ditto to all my colleagues who spoke about the CEO, Rich Llewellyn, as well as our very own Paul Krikorian. It is not an easy task. It is not an enviable position to be in. Crunching numbers, knowing that as a result, there's going to be a lot of folks who are going to be living in a tremendous amount of pain. So to Paul Krikorian, I want to thank you very much, as well as all of our budgeteers who serve on the committee, for your very hard work, all the long hours that you have put in so far. Who would ever imagine this, we'd be living this economic catastrophe, and so much pain, so much hurt, so much death in our streets, say, in so many of our communities? It's very clear that LA will not be able to weather this economic downpour on its own. And I know that as Senate President, you know, I worked tirelessly over the years to store as much as money as possible into a rainy day fund. And now that the city of LA, as well as other municipalities throughout the state, we are truly in the eye of this pandemic storm. And I'm going to state the obvious, we need that immediate relief now. We've worked so long to store away billions of dollars, and now is the time to actually use it. As we all know, it's time to roll up our sleeves and to really push our partners at the state and federal level to secure the funding that's necessary as soon as possible to care for the 4 million people who call the city home in these very unprecedented times. And as a city family, we are all in this together. We all need to share in the sacrifice, so we're able to continue to provide the variety of services that residents need so badly to avoid the layoffs. So let's kind of get, cut to the chase, and get to the brass tacks and to the bottom line. Without serious investment from the federal government and our partners in Sacramento, we're going to have to make very deep, very painful, quite frankly, catastrophic cuts. Now, I'm stating the obvious, and I understand and respect Rich Llewellyn's perspective at the end of the day, because as budgeteers, they play with real money, not promissory notes, not perhaps money or monopoly money. They want to see real money at the end of the day, if we're going to be able to avoid the layoffs in the deep cuts of more than $600 million. So we know that real lives are at stake. Madam President, I have a few questions for our CEO, Rich Llewellyn, if I respectfully request the opportunity to ask.
Please go ahead, sir.
A couple of things, Rich. Have we yet engaged with either the governor or the LA delegation of state assembly members, as well as state senators, as well as our congressional colleagues of the Los Angeles Congressional Delegation Caucus, if you will, on what our budget infrastructure deficit is, and what we need from them specifically?
Councilmember, thank you for that question. We have been, and certainly your colleague, Mr. Buscaino, through the League of Cities, has been one of the faces of sort of our Washington effort nationally. So the mayor, the council member as president of the League of Cities, and your Washington office have engaged the entire delegation for federal relief. I know that both Mr. Buscaino and Mr. Garcetti have spoken many times to the House Speaker. And I believe, you know, certainly she has said repeatedly that state and local government will be part of any relief package, even though the other side of the aisle has expressed concern about that. The question is how big it's going to be, and whether it's going to be a one-now, which I want any and all, but one-now, and the president says, and we will look at a bigger one later. In Sacramento, they have, as you know, are facing their own budget challenges and hoping to get help from Sacramento, from Washington. So I think it will be an ongoing sort of discussion with them about how much of their money, quite frankly, they can share with us facing their own deficit. Sacramento has, as you know, been helpful, very helpful on the homelessness side, providing money for us to purchase the number of hotels we've been purchasing through the Sacramento's, Sacramento share of the first pot of relief money.
I want to emphasize the following. In state the obvious, City Hall doesn't have a printing press in our basement, nor does the State Capitol. Now, obviously, it's our friends in Congress right now who have the ability, at least through the executive branch, through the Treasury Department, to print money and incur ongoing debt. Our state constitution, as well as our charter, require a balanced budget with that, the potential for real devastating, painful cuts that impact the human condition. I appreciate very much the ongoing conversations, especially from Councilman Joe Buscaino, who has the honor of representing all of us, not just in Los Angeles, but the whole National League of Cities nationwide, for all the hard work he's been doing in Washington, D.C. I want to make a suggestion to Rich Llewellyn, Llewellyn and the executive branch, and also on the legislative side, is that we also call for a meeting with our friends, both in the Senate, as well as the Assembly, and our congressional friends too. I appreciate the engagement with Madam Speaker herself, Nancy Pelosi at the highest level too. But I think that our own congressional friends on the ground need to also hear and have a deeper understanding of the painful cuts that will impact their constituents as well, who they represent at a federal level, who our state legislators represent at a state level, and who we represent at a local level. We all represent distinct constituents at the end of the day. So our friends in Washington can pontificate about the framers of the Constitution and democracy, but at the end of the day, that doesn't pay the rent. And that's why I think we need to engage all of them at every single level, but especially here locally, at home. Let me go just a couple of questions, and then I'll be done, Madam President. Mr. Llewellyn, how much of the Corona relief funds allocated for the homeless roadmap have been spent so far? And how much of the CAO anticipate will be spent by the deadline?
So, Councilmember, the most recent accounting I saw was around $135 million of the $200 had been already spent. And we are currently, there is a motion, there is a proposal on your council agenda tomorrow to continue the project room key projects, which will be another $32 million. And the tiny home villages, which you've already approved, which are in construction or in planning, I believe, including the one in your districts, sir, those are not going to finish by 12:30. And so we will have buildings on those in January, February, which is likely to use the entire amount.
Okay, so that would be the difference of the $200 million and the $135 million, that differential that you make reference to, Rich?
Yes, sir, we're entitled, we're likely to use the entire amount.
Okay. And a couple of things too, is I want to also see if we can get a detailed report back in all of the sites that the council members, including myself, have cited as possible real physical sites for our homeless unhoused communities. I know that there have been some sites in City 14 that have been rejected for reasons I'm not quite sure about yet, but I would like to see if we can get a report back of all the sites that have been submitted to the CAO's office, of places where we can house our unhoused community. Can that be done, Mr. Rich?
We're happy to do so, sir. We keep records on everyone we get from council and our review of them. We're happy to report back.
Yeah, I know some of it was, couldn't purchase it on time, or, you know, the sites themselves, not for, you know, physical, technical reasons, but, you know, it was deemed to be used for other, you know, purposes for the city. So we can sort of kind of, a macro holistic, not holistic, but a macro audit of all the council districts and sites, again, that have been submitted, but have been rejected too. Because I think we have to relook at that, given the crisis, it's such a crisis for homelessness. The last point I want to make is sort of kind of follow up on Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez's very articulate and detailed perspective. And I think it's been, the short term, I've been here on council for a little over a month and a half, is there seems to be an ongoing, you know, common theme with all of my colleagues throughout the city of LA, is how much money is the city of LA spending? And there's no criticism on the money that's been spent for the purposes as it relates to COVID-19 recovery. But how much money have we been spending, have we been spending that, again, that LA County Departments or Board of Supervisors should have allocated and should have been spending themselves? So we do have an idea specifically of what money we have spent specifically that LA County should have spent themselves, because I would imagine, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that whatever monies that have been spent, that should have, are under the jurisdiction of LA County, I should say, that money would have eased greatly our structural deficit today.
Councilmember, COVID expenditures, some of which I think we all agree are totally in the county's wheelhouse, some of which are in ours, like protective gear for our own staff, have directly and very difficultly affected our budget. Most of those are reimbursable by FEMA, so it's going to be paid back, but over time. The ones that are not, your council has already authorized moving some of the Corona relief funds, totally consistent with the statute, totally consistent with the statute, into our budget to cover our costs that are not FEMA-eligible. But it is certainly true, and your council has certainly made it clear before, that particularly sort of what looked like direct public healthcare spending, such like as testing, that the county needs to take a bigger role in that, and we need to figure out a way to sort of reduce the city's costs in that, even if they're eventually reimbursable. And so the mayor's office has been working to reduce particularly the testing costs, which is our sort of almost direct medical thing that the county should certainly be doing, through the way it structures the program, and through the county opening more sites. We were the original sort of, we ran out of the gate. The county slowly has caught up, but that is going to be an ongoing challenge, I think, for this council and mayor.
And how much money, is that a specific amount?
Councilmember, I'm sorry, I don't have a, what I'd call a county number, I don't have that.
Okay, if you could be so kind of to give that to the council, so you can share with us specifically. And be very clear about one thing, is that I give kudos to the executive branch, to Mayor Eric Garcetti for stepping up and doing what he needed to do with regards to immediate testing for all of our communities in Los Angeles, in particular the most vulnerable communities, because the void of leadership at the county to really step in and lean in, especially when they have a county health department, which the city of LA doesn't. But it goes back to the point I think a lot of council members have been making quite consistently. Does the city of LA continue to expend dollars that can be otherwise invested in programs, housing, homelessness, et cetera, where the county is not stepping in, where they have a tremendous amount of dollars, and they've yet to make decisions on what to do with those dollars? So that number would be very important, because I think it's a starting point of a real discussion with regards to how are we going to collaborate and cooperate, or if we're not going to collaborate and cooperate. It's just either one of those two. So that number will be very important. And then again, just to reiterate, the sites that have been submitted by council members that have been, for some reason, determined not feasible by your office. And if you can give me a timeframe, not now, but, you know, offline, staff member, staff member, however you like, I'd much appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilman Krikorian, and especially for your statement that in times of trouble, we cannot just cut an equal amount across every single department. Everything in our city is not equal across the board, and thank you for recognizing that. I know that with your leadership, we're going to get through this. You know, as a city, the taxpayers expect us to deliver on core services, and I really think that this is an opportunity for all of us to look at our budget and to focus on those core services of what they expect us to deliver to them. You know, I personally believe that public safety is not only one of those core services, but it's a responsibility and a requirement of the city. But even if we use the across-the-board model, where we cut everyone equally, we need to recognize that, you know, we have already cut LAPD by 7% earlier this year, and that $40 million of those funds went to offset furloughs here in our city. You know, our CEO has made the statement that there's still funds in the CARES Act. This money must be budgeted, I believe, by December 30th. And instead of us trying to figure out how to spend this money, we have something that is right in front of us, and that's the safety of our residents. To continually call on LAPD to solve the city's financial problems is something that I cannot support, especially when crime is up in our city. And as we move forward, I hope that we look at allocating funds from the CARES Act funding to offset those proposed cuts to LAPD. But thank you, Mr. Llewellyn, thank you, Councilmember Krikorian, for all your hard work, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues, for your thoughtful comments. I just wanted to note that there are a number of interventions that some of you have mentioned that may still come to pass, to divert the path that we're on from the very, very worst-case scenarios. There may be a robust aid package that's delivered by Congress. I wouldn't hold my breath, given the nature of Congress these days, but that may happen. And if it does, we will be in better shape. There may be a sudden recovery of our economy that is quicker and steeper than we currently see as being likely. That could happen. There may be breakthroughs in discussions with labor about ways that we can reduce the costs of the collective bargaining agreements. All of those are potential interventions that may in fact reduce the impact of the revenue shortfall that we're currently experiencing. Those are all well and good, but we cannot anticipate any of them. We have to move forward right now with preparing for the what-if, if none of those things come to be. And that's really what's before you today. So on that, I just want to talk a little bit about the minority report, the difference between the minority report and the majority report on the one issue of how that came about. So as part of the 3% exercise, issue of, of how that came about. So as part of the 3% exercise, all of the departments were asked to submit recommendations for how to reach that goal. The LAPD submitted its recommendations that included, excuse me, included layoffs of sworn personnel and many civilians, civilians that we have worked for many years to try to build up in that workforce, so that we wouldn't have police doing civilian work. So that was submitted, and the CAO disagreed with whether or not those proposals would realize the 3% savings. So the proposal in the committee yesterday was to move forward with the department's proposal, which, which by the way, they, I will say, the department feels that even that proposal will be exceptionally difficult for them to meet without having dramatic impacts in public safety, because the hiring freeze alone, which is already going forward, is going to significantly reduce the size of the LAPD. So the department does not support even its own proposal that it put forward. The difference between the minority and the majority report, because we all agreed, let's reduce the number of potential layoffs. The difference is that the minority report indicates, well, okay, yes, you should reduce the number of layoffs, but all of those offsetting savings that you're going to need to derive will still need to come out of the department. So I would submit that's a circular argument, which is impossible to meet, because the only way that the department can realize those, that level of reductions is through layoffs. That is the only option that's available. The LAPD's budget is 90% or more than 90% for people, like the rest of the general fund. So there aren't hidden, you know, sort of purchase agreements or something that you can just cancel and make up that kind of savings. There aren't, in any of our departments, when 90% of what we spend goes to pay for, for people. So I would submit that to put that constraint of saying those savings need to come from someplace else in the department other than layoffs is a canard. It, it, it's just not possible. And what that basically is saying is if you support that, you're basically saying, well, let's go back and admit that they have to have that level of layoffs. So that would be problem number one. Problem number two is to realize savings in personnel in LAPD requires layoffs. Unlike the civilian workforce, where we can impose or agree to furloughs, that is not a possibility without a negotiated change in the collective bargaining agreements with sworn, with firefighters or police, because both of them have a no-layoff guarantee, I'm sorry, a no-furlo guarantee. So that means that in order to realize that savings this year, you'll, if you want to go down the road of increasing the number of potential layoffs, those are permanent changes. Furloughs are not permanent. Furloughs can be turned off. Layoffs cannot be. Once people are gone, they are gone. So that will be another reason to support the majority position on this rather than the minority position. And then finally, I just want to go back to this 3% exercise in the first place, because this is, it's really an arbitrary exercise. All of our departments are being hurt. All of them are sharing sacrifice right now. And that 3% number was, was not intended to be a policy decision based on what the core services or priorities of this council are. The CAO did not engage in that exercise. The CAO was just looking at the numbers, the math, you know, how do we get, how do we meet that budgetary goal? It's up to us, this council, to make the difficult priority, prioritization based on what we feel the values are that should be reflected in our budget, based on what we think the needs of the city are in our budget. That hasn't been done in this report at all. And so you all have my commitment that the Budget and Finance Committee will continue to engage in that process of comparing one department against another, of taking the CAO's recommendations for potential cuts and evaluating, you know, is this the right place to cut or not? Is there a better place to do it? We will do that work, but that's not in this. And it's not in what's before you today. So to support the minority report, that all of those potential cuts must remain in the Los Angeles Police Department as opposed to anyplace else, is, is basically abandoning the council's role in deciding whether or not that 3% figure is appropriate for this department, or if another figure may be more appropriate. That's up to us to do, not the CAO. And essentially, by, by, by sticking slavishly to that number, that percentage, that exercise, we are essentially giving up our ability to exercise our own judgment, whatever that may be. And I know there's different viewpoints about, you know, where cuts should be and why they should be made, but none of that was done in the CAO report, because that's not the CAO's job. That's our job. So I would ask that you support the committee's recommendations, support the majority report, and if I would just, just a, a, a small comment on the other issue that Mr. Price raised, the point of this, with the COVID fund, COVID funds, was, as you all know, these have to be spent or encumbered by the end of the year. We have already instructed that anything that is not spent by that date will be swept into the general fund in order to reimburse expenses that are COVID-related that we've already incurred. So not a penny of that money is ever going to go back to Washington. So that's already baked in. The question is, in the off-chance that Congress should come along and say, well, we're going to relieve you of that December 30th deadline, and we're going to let you go ahead and spend that into 2021. The question is, should that funding remain lockboxt, or should it still be swept into the budget? I would submit it needs to still be swept into the budget, because then the council can make the difficult decisions about how to prioritize spending against all of our needs. It, it doesn't make sense to me that we would continue to hold this money aside for specific COVID-related expenses, which are very legitimate, at the same time that we're cutting other things that we're doing to respond to the COVID crisis and the diminishment of revenues and everything else that we have to deal with. Let's just do it all holistically together. Once the year is over, we know that that's what we have, and, and that should be part of our budget solutions as well. So I would ask for your I-vote on the recommendations as they stand before you.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. And I certainly want to echo the comments regarding our Budget Chair, Mr. Kocorian, and our CAO, Mr. Lewelland. I think without their many suggestions, we would not be close to surviving this budget crisis. And I think when we add up the savings of the many items that we've suggested here, we'll actually be doing a little better than, than we had estimated, because a lot of these have value. I do want to speak to item 26, the LAPD layoffs. As those of you who know me well know, I have always opposed layoffs of any kind in the city budget in Los Angeles. And I even go back to the state legislature and wrote one of the seminal pieces of legislation regarding layoffs. So I am not a fan under any circumstances. I'm particularly not a fan of the LAPD layoffs, and it is not because I view the LAPD as a sacred cow. With some irony, when we went through the last budget crisis, not many of you were here yet, some of you were here as staff, I was the one person that was arguing for some modest reductions to the LAPD budget, particularly noting that we had cut civilians, and we then moved sworn into civilian positions to have them do things that were much less cost-effective in, in having them do the exact things, except they were less well-trained for them. They were trained expensively for law enforcement purposes that were more direct, and we were paying extra for the privilege. I would note that I don't think I got any traction on that, not even a second. So with some irony, I am here suggesting that we reduce further cuts by layoff to the LAPD. Now, I don't think we're looking at them as a sacred cow. I think we just don't realize how much we've cut them already. We have cut overtime dramatically, which is the equivalent of many officers. We have in the budget cuts in the hundreds to the number of officers that we will have as a force and the number of civilians that we will have as a force already. And we are, although not sure how much of it correlates, we are having a spike in violent crime and other crimes. We're up 30% in murders across the city. We're up 34% in shots fired and shots hitting a victim. My district, the numbers happen to be massively higher, but all districts are having this experience. And I recognize that there are issues that we have had with the LAPD, not unique to the LAPD, but with law enforcement across the country. And we will continue to work to reform the department, although in some ways, the department was already ahead of the game responding for years to Rodney King and other incidents that happened here in the city. But cutting them, I don't believe, is the answer. I know there are some that do, that want to completely eliminate law enforcement. I mean, honestly, we all agree that black lives matter. The question is, do some black lives matter that we are trying to protect from police misconduct, but other black lives don't matter, the people that are actually going to be killed because we don't have adequate law enforcement? So I would ask that we not move in the direction of continuing to engage in deeper and deeper cuts to the force in LAPD, to not continue to reduce morale to a lower and lower degree. And I would offer a substitute motion to item 26, that we amend the report to eliminate the proposed potential layoffs in LAPD and instruct the CAO to develop recommendations to budget and finance for offsetting solutions, including negotiations with our labor partners. And I'd like to co-present that with Mr. Buscaino.
Mr. Buscaino, are you co-presenting this motion with Mr. Corretts?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lee. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Corretts?
No, the, the only thing I would add is that if this doesn't succeed, I think Mr. Kocorian's is the better proposal, and I would encourage my colleagues as a second choice to, to support that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members. I especially want to compliment the council president in this particular moment, as we do some of the dirtiest work that we have to do during this time period. Since you've become president, we've had a pandemic, a budget crisis, massive protests, a referendum on race, and a bunch of other stuff that I can't name. And you've held the ship together, so we are deeply appreciative of you for that work and want to take this moment to recognize it. Secondly, I want to recognize the Budget Chair, again, because this is ugly work nobody wants to do. This is not fun stuff. And, you know, Mr. Kocorian has led a process that allowed the council and the mayor to put the position in, put the city in the position where at least we have a rainy day fund to go into, as tragic as it is that we have to go into it. At least we have it. We, in Council District 8, we call him Cool Hand Kocorian, because he leads the process with such a, a, a level hand. He, Mr. Kocorian, you started your comments by saying that, you know, we shouldn't turn on each other and we shouldn't blame each other, and I agree with you. It's a very tough time that we shouldn't blame each other. But I don't want anybody to mistake that for the notion that this situation is not without blame. During this pandemic and mini-recession, families are cutting back, cities are cutting back, states are cutting back, community-based organizations are cutting back, but you know who isn't cutting back? Billionaires. They're not, they don't have one less dollar during this time period. They've not been asked to give up anything. In fact, they've made more during it. And I think it's, it's our role, we're the first responders, we're the firefighters, we got to go put out the economic fire, but like any good firefighter, it's also our role to tell people how the fire started and how to avoid it in the future. And, and we have an absolutely unsustainable economy. When I came onto the council, people were telling me about the last recession, how it was so terrible, and there had never been anything like it, and we'd never see anything like it again, and here we are, just a few years later. And at a certain point, we have to say, let's get off that treadmill where every 10 years, we're making painful cuts and compromising the quality of life for humans in our city. Again, I don't have a lot to move the conversation forward. I just wanted to offer that to all of us, and, and put that on our shoulders as our responsibility. After we're done with this dirty work of figuring out where we're going to cut and how we're going to compromise the quality of life for the citizens of our city through this budget process, after we've done that, it, it's our job to go tell it on the mountaintop how to make sure we don't have this fire again, and again, and again, and again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson, and thank you for your kind words. Mr. Buscaino?
I do want to thank you, Madam President. Do you want to echo Mr. Harris Dawson's comments on recognizing your leadership, first and foremost? What an unprecedented year, as we often said in New York, but you have been in that chair every single day. And I'm happy to partner with you in this entire city council body. Mr. Kocorian, these are tough decisions, hard decisions that need to be made, and we need to prepare for the worst. But the reason why, and let me be clear, why I'm co-presenting this, this substitute motion with Mr. Corretts, on, you know, supporting zero layoffs to our police department and our, our men and women of the LAPD sworn personnel, is because I'm deeply concerned. I'm deeply concerned about the, the long-term ramifications of the decisions that we make here. The pandemic has ravaged our city, as we've seen in ways that will be felt far after the virus has left us. It has hit communities of color, like those in my district, the hardest, but on top of that, adding the double whammy of cutting our public safety in the form of layoffs, which we're preparing for with this report, will again hurt communities of color the hardest. This year, we know that we've seen over, experienced over 300 homicides, and half of those have been in, in South Bureau. History has clearly shown us that by adding more police officers is a potent factor, maybe the most potent of all in decreasing crime. When the LAPD added officers in the mid-1990s, homicides dropped. When the force shrank in the late 1990s, the killings went back up. When more officers were slowly hired after 2001, murders went down again. Now, let us not forget about the brownouts of the last recession, the increased response times and how long it took for the city to recover. If we decrease our police force, let me be the first to tell you, policing 101 will tell us that we'll see an increase in crime. We know the answer to this test. Crime has a terrible cost on society, and good police officers have so much value to all of us. When people call 911, they expect an immediate response. When somebody is shot and killed, their family expects that crime to be investigated and the perpetrator brought to justice. So I caution this body... to justice. So I caution this body, this council, to weigh the impact of the decisions we make today. And let me be clear, I do not support further reductions in public safety. Let me also be clear that we need to increase the resources that we put forward toward public safety if we ever hope to get a handle on the increases in crime that we're seeing today. This is the investment toward the vision of the future that I see for the city. This is a city that I want my kids to grow up in, a safe city where businesses can thrive and flourish, where innovation can occur. But our guiding principle as a city, our core job as members of this city council is to do everything we can to ensure that we have a safe city above all else. Thank you, Madam President and colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Sadio?
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Madam President, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Great. Well, let me first echo first the praise for your leadership. Mr. Harris Dawson noted that you've dealt with pandemic, fires, protests, our constant march towards racial, social, economic justice in the city. You haven't had a strike, though, I'll note that. Not that I'm calling for one. So I do want to praise you for your leadership during these most difficult times. We've got a hard job to do, and we've got to do it the right way and the right time. Let me begin by noting that this pandemic is a plague on all houses. So my vote, my support, my comment is about the desire to not have any layoffs in the city and not to disrupt the service. I used to say this all the time. During crisis, particularly economic crisis, the last place you want to cut services is in the government, because people rely on our services. There's been recent reports about how, you know, the poor are suffering the most, the homeless are suffering the most. As we put these orders to stay at home, while those who don't have a home suffer more. They need, they need to find a place to go to the restroom, they need to find a place to shower, they need to find a place to store their stuff. You know, so we cannot reduce the service. People rely on libraries to go in there and to, you know, use the computers to get their Wi-Fi to figure out how they can participate in society. And so this is a statement for no cuts in services. So that's number one. One of the things to look at, I know Mr. DeLeon was asking this question, it's the same question I have, and I've had from the beginning. Every day, people in the city of Los Angeles should thank the mayor for his incredible leadership during this pandemic. We have set up an infrastructure to test people. He is on daily to, you know, sort us on to wear masks, to follow the rules and protocols. But frankly, it's not our job. In the structure of our organization, the city of Los Angeles, we don't have a health department. Yes, we jumped out there and we did the job, but in this economic crisis, the cost of this, we need to know how much we've spent and how much we should be compensated for for doing the testing and providing the health services. That is the job of the county of Los Angeles. And I know we're waiting for FEMA money, but we're doing the county's job. And so we should be billing the county, and they can bill FEMA for those costs. We should be getting that money now where it's most available. And so I think we need to continue, Mr. Luallan, with that ramping down of us being engaged in health services and health delivery. That's just not our job. Somebody should be doing it. Those people who should be doing it should be doing it. They will not do it as long as we're doing it for them. And so we need to note that. Finally, let me add some experiences that I had. In 1993, there was the beginning of a long-term recession, it actually started about two years earlier. The nation was changing its structure of its economy, we were downsizing, we're shutting down factories. We were losing literally tens of thousands of jobs a month as part of the deindustrialization of this country. I was leading SCIU Local 660. In 91, we had signed some really great contracts with some great raises. In 93, we were looking at the loss of 10,000 jobs. And we went and raced to the table with the county of Los Angeles. Of course, we were also involved in some other more dramatic actions, but we raced to the table to sit down and figure out how we could avoid job loss. Our point was to protect the service of the county of Los Angeles and continue those services. We need to sit with the representatives of the workforce of the city of Los Angeles. They must be at the table. We need to sit with them and work with them to find the resolutions and solutions to this temporary problem. Let's note, let's make decisions for a temporary problem that will not impact us in a long-term way. So we don't want to make a decision that's only addressing a 90-day or 180-day or 360-day problem that's going to take us 10 years to recover from. And I think we have to keep that in mind. And so I would call upon our city unions. They are the voice and representative of the working men and women of the city. They must sit with us at a table. We do not want to take unilateral action, but at this moment, we don't want to be forced to take unilateral action. And if there's ever a moment in which we can do that in spite of what the MOU say, it's a moment of a global pandemic. And so I would call upon them to come to the table, to work with us. In 1993, we deferred salary increases, and we were able to protect each and every job and each and every service, but only because as a union, we were thoughtful enough to defer raises that we had won during a strike the previous two years. And we deferred those raises. We got them later on when the economy picked up and when things got better. But we, we used those deferrals and worked with the city management to work with some voluntary layoff programs and how to help us keep the service intact. That should be our goal. That's our duty, and we should be working hard to provide that service. So I think that's it. I want to thank you. I want to thank all the colleagues for your comments today. Mr. DeLeon, I agree with you. We've got to collaborate more with our city, county, state, and federal allies. We should be doing that daily, not just big meetings, but also just on a daily basis, working with them to get the resources that we need here in the city of Los Angeles, because this is where we, the public has served most directly. Madam President, Madam Chair, thank you again for your leadership. And, and, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. And thank you, members. I know this isn't our typical FSR. We began this fiscal year knowing that we'd had to continue adjusting our budget numbers, and I think we started off that way as soon as we started meeting in, back in March. And we knew that we would have to make really difficult decisions during these uncertain times. And I think Mr. Kocorian has done an amazing job preparing us for the inevitable, unfortunately. And this pandemic isn't something that we saw coming, and it's something that's impacted all of our lives and our livelihoods for so many of our residents, including our city's budget, which is what we're debating here this afternoon. As a city, I think we've done so much to be able to respond and provide assistance to so many of our families struggling to this pandemic. Even through public health and this financial crisis, we have done everything humanly possible to try to help as many people as possible. And our city staff in particular, and our first responders, have to be applauded for their continued effort and their continued services to provide some of these programs to all of our Angelinos. As you know, our city staff has worked really long hours in our shelters. They've, they've been staffing our testing locations. They have delivered meals. They've provided distance learning for some of our low-income families in a lot of our parks. They've helped conduct virtual council meetings and our committee meetings, all of our staff that helps us do that every time we meet. We have served as a disaster service workers across the city. And I just want to say to our workforce that I am so incredibly proud of the work that you are doing. And without our city staff, we could not have launched any of our COVID programs to have, help so many of our Angelinos. Because of their hard work, we've been able to help families during this pandemic. And because of their hard work, we're going to continue to do so. Everyone continues to suffer through this period. There is not one person that I've encountered that has not expressed the agony and the personal sacrifices that this has all caused. You know, our cases are surging, and our state and county continue to shut down businesses. So let's be honest, we are in a very difficult financial situation because of the inaction of Congress, and I have to reiterate that. Because of the inaction of Congress, their failure of our federal government to provide assistance has left our city and countless other cities and our residents and our workforce struggling to survive. And that's why we're in this situation. So I hope that the new Congress and this new administration is able to provide our city and its residents with the much-needed relief that we so desperately need. But hope is not enough, and we have to prepare ourselves for what's left. And I know that today is part of a conversation that, of how we're going to deal with a $675 million shortfall. And as we address this, we also need to be cognizant of the fact that as elected officials, we have a responsibility to keep this city in good financial health, and it's something that requires all of us to make really tough decisions. The city council has faced a year of difficult decisions, and they're only going to get worse if our federal government does not step in to help us. The need is great, but the resources that we have to respond with are just limited, and that's the honest truth. I know that none of us want to vote on laying anyone off, and I know all of us struggle with that. And this has to be the last resort. But nevertheless, we have to reiterate this one more time and reassure everyone that today, we're not voting on laying anyone off, but instead allowing us to move forward on a package of budget recommendations to address our $675 million shortfall. So even though we're going to move forward today, we need to continue, Mr. Luallan, to avoid layoffs as much as possible. And just like our families are having to struggle with balancing their own paycheck, we need to do the same. And we all have a role to play, and this has to be, we have to make a shared sacrifice in doing so. And we're going to continue to fight for federal relief package and make sure that this action today, if we approved the recommendations of the Budget and Finance Committee, we need to ensure that we're also reiterating to the federal government that we need them to step in. Mr. Kocorian, I just want to thank you, sir, for your leadership, and the members of the Budget and Finance Committee and all of your staff for working so diligently to prepare today's FSR. And I know you went into a very lengthy meeting yesterday. We were all on pins and needles, listening to the hours and hours of back and forth of recommendations and debate. So I appreciate all the time that was put into it last night. So let's just be clear, whether you're an Angelino, a city worker, or a business owner, we are one city, and we have got to get through this together. And I just want to make sure that we understand that. And we continue to bring solutions to this council, Mr. Luallan, as we debate these difficult decisions and make sure that we're still standing at the end of the day. So with that, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and prepare a vote. There were a number of motions that were made, so let's start with Mr. Corretts's motion that was introduced by Mr. Corretts and Mr. Buscaino and seconded by Mr. Lee. And this amends recommendation 26 to remove the LAPD layoffs. Just prepare to vote on that, on that amendment. I'm sorry, on the motion.
I'm calling for a no vote.
And Mr. Kocorian is calling for a no vote on that motion. So let's...
Can I have a clarification, Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Blumenfield.
You're saying it's calling for the elimination of layoffs. Nowhere in the recommendations from the chair, from the committee, is it calling for layoffs. So I don't know how we are eliminating the call to layoffs when there is not a call to layoffs in the underlying...
Madam Clerk, do you want to read the proposed amendment that Mr. Corretts introduced earlier today?
Yes, Madam President. The Corretts' motion is to amend the Budget and Finance Committee report, which provides substitute language for recommendation number 26 of the committee report, and that would be to remove all LAPD layoffs, sworn and civilian.
Is that clear, Mr. Blumenfield?
I'm going to have to pull up the number 26, because it doesn't, I don't remember that item having a, saying that we're having layoffs.
It does not. It does not.
Hold on for just a second, Mr. Kocorian. Did you have anything to add?
Yeah, so, sorry, I'm just trying to get to the recommendation right now. Item 26 amends the CAO's report to reduce proposed potential layoffs in LAPD to match the department's original recommendations to the CAO. And 355 sworn, 273 civilians, and instruct the CAO to develop recommendations to budget and finance for offsetting solutions. That's what the recommendation is that's before you. It does not call for layoffs. It, in fact, reduces the number of potential layoffs and then calls for savings to make up for that difference.
Okay, Mr. Corretts?
Yes, if I, thank you, Madam President. If I could just clarify what I believe was the wording of my motion, to amend the report to eliminate consideration of potential layoffs in LAPD and instructions to the CAO to develop recommendations for budget and finance for offsetting solutions, including negotiation with our labor partners. So it would eliminate the consideration of layoffs in this area.
Correct. That's what I agreed to.
Okay, let's just go ahead and vote on this item.
As to that, Madam President, I would just say that in the crisis that we just delineated, to take away consideration of anything would be irresponsible, and I ask for a no vote.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and call for the vote. We're going to go ahead and, I'm sorry. Call the vote and go ahead and take the roll.
And this vote is on the motion presented by Corretts and Buscaino and seconded by Councilmember Lee. Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, no.
Bonin?
Bonin, no.
Buscaino?
Yes.
Sadio?
No.
DeLeon?
No.
Harris Dawson?
No.
Corretts?
Aye.
Kocorian?
No.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
No.
O'Farrell?
No.
Price?
No.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
No.
Wesson?
No.
Four ayes and 11 noes. This item fails.
Okay, let's move on to the second motion to amend item 26. That was introduced by Mr. Price, and it was seconded by me. The only thing I want to add to this recommendation is, in November, the AdHOC COVID Committee and the City Council voted to give the CAO instructions to sweep any unspent money from the CRF and put it in the reserve fund if by December 30th deadline for the CARES Act money isn't extended. We made it very clear that we will not be sending any money back to the feds. If the deadline is extended, we should get a report back on what the money is left over and have a discussion in council as the best ways to use it. We've committed money from the CARES Act on homelessness, rent relief, utilities, business relief, and we have no other sources of money to be able to help families and our unhoused individuals. So I think we need to have that conversation. We need to have a report back and a discussion of the unspent CRF money. So I ask for an aye vote for amending motion 31. Go ahead, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, no.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Aye.
DeLeon?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Corretts?
Actually, I'm unclear. This is item 31?
Yes, sir, item 31.
Because item 26, we voted down one substitute, but we never voted on the amendment. So this is not that. So this is not that.
No, this is recommendation 31 of item 28.
In the Budget and Finance Committee report.
Which is relating to coronavirus relief funds?
Yes, sir.
Oh, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kukorin.
No.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
13 ayes and 2 nos. This motion is approved.
Okay, let's move on to the motion introduced by Mr. Bonin and seconded by Mr. Price. Did you want to read that? Motion, Madam Clerk?
I believe this motion is to approve the minority report, which amends recommendation number 26. Actually, it provides substitute language for recommendation number 26 of the Budget and Finance Committee report.
Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, no.
Bonin.
Bonin, yes.
Buscaino.
No.
Sadio.
No.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coretz.
No.
Kukorin.
No.
Lee.
No.
Martinez.
No.
O'Farrell.
No.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
No.
Rue.
No.
Wesson.
No.
Four ayes and 11 nos. This item fails.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on item 28, the Budget and Finance Report, as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President. And for clarification, this is as amended by the only motion that passed, which was the Price-Martinis motion to change the recommendation number 31.
Okay, go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
No.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coretz.
Aye.
Kukorin.
Aye.
Lee.
No.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
13 ayes and 2 nos. This committee report is approved as amended.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's next?
The clerk has verbal motions to read into the record.
How many do you have?
We have five.
Okay, go ahead and start with the first one.
The first verbal motion introduced by Councilmember Blumenfield is a Rule 16 motion. And this moves to approve a personal services contract with Kevin Mikio Tamaki doing business as Tamaki Consulting for providing services to the 3rd Council District. And a seconder?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Next one?
Thank you. The next is a Rule 16 motion presented by Councilmember Sadio. This is to issue bonds in $50 million to provide financing for the cost of acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of a hospital, healthcare, and administrative facilities for Barlow Respiratory Hospital at 2000 Stadium Way in CD1. And to hold the TFR hearing next Tuesday, December 15th. A seconder?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Coretz.
Thank you.
Next.
The next motion was introduced by Councilmember Sadio and to be referred to the Housing Committee. It is to instruct the CAO with the assistance of the City Attorney and the Housing and Community Investment Department to seek and take all necessary actions to find $45,695,000 subject to eligibility in conjunction with state and federal agencies if necessary to initiate the acquisition of the Hillside Villa Apartments located at 636 North Hill Place to be used for affordable public housing and to report back to the Housing Committee in 30 days on all relevant findings. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Buscaino. Next.
The next motion was introduced by Councilmember Blumenfield to be referred to the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee. It is requesting the City Attorney to prepare and present an ordinance that would prohibit electric prods or shocking devices, flank or bucking straps, wire tie downs, and sharpened or fixed spurs or rowels at all rodeo and rodeo related events in the City of Los Angeles. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell.
And the final motion was introduced by Councilmember Blumenfield to be referred to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee. It is to instruct the Department of Public Works and the General Services Department with the assistance of the City Attorney, CAO, and CLA to report within 90 days with recommendations for implementing a job order contracting process for minor construction and maintenance projects within the city. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Price.
Thank you.
Is that all you have?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Madam President. Two motions, colleagues. First one is regarding the skate park located at, the Channel Street Skate Park located at 610 West Channel Street. Move that the Department of General Services be instructed to effectuate the non-financial transfer of the city-owned property located at 610 West Channel Street in San Pedro from the Port of Los Angeles to the General Services Department. I further move that the GSD, with the assistance of the City Attorney and the Department of Recreation and Parks, negotiate a nonprofit lease agreement, subject to council approval, with the San Pedro Skate Park Association for the operation and maintenance of the skate park. This agreement should specify that Rec. Parks Department will oversee the completion of all necessary improvements and repairs identified in the city-approved construction plans that are needed to bring the skate park into compliance with relevant codes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lee.
And one last one, Madam President. It's a friendly 245. Move that pursuant to Charter Section 245, Subsection B, the council hereby resolve to waive review of the December 3, 2020 action of the Board of Harbor Commissioners to adopt a resolution for an agreement with International Business Machines Corporation for the establishment, operation, and maintenance of a cyber resilience center as further described in the text of this motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfield.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a City Council Resolution for the retirement of Serena Fitz Ward. And I'll read the last clause. It says, "Now therefore be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks hereby commend and congratulate Serena Fitz Ward for over 32 and a half years of dedicated service to the Department of Recreation and Parks and the people of the City of Los Angeles."
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfield.
Rice noodle mix?
Yeah.
Any others, Mr. Rue?
Right. Do you get that, Siro?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Members, can you please mute yourselves? Thank you. Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. I have one motion. It's a follow-on to what we approved through my motion earlier in the year to establish a digital inclusion fund. And it is seconded by you Council President Martinez, Councilwoman Rodriguez, and Council Member Price. The moving clause says, "I therefore move that the City Council instruct the City Administrative Officer and Chief Legislative Analyst to report on the creation of a digital equity plan that sets short-term and long-term goals, identifies funding sources, and ensures collaboration among all departments working toward this effort. And second, I further move that the City Council instruct the CAO and CLA to report back with policies at the federal and state level that will assist the city in promoting digital inclusion and report on best practices implemented by other cities to promote digital inclusion and equity, including the creation of a digital inclusion coordinator position."
Yes, I will confirm that I've seconded that motion. Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Price and Ms. Rodriguez as well.
Great.
Mr. Coretz.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just have one motion, the moving clauses. I therefore move that the City Council, in accordance with the Los Angeles Municipal Code, Section 62 dot 132, approve the street banner program identifying the Westwood Village Improvement Association as the City of Los Angeles Non-Event Street Banner Program. I further move that the council approve the content of the street banners as attached.
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Buscaino. Any others, Mr. Coretz?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
I'm waiting for a close to memory.
Oh, thank you. Members, are there any other verbal motions? Ms. Rodriguez?
Sorry, I have a journey.
Okay, thank you. See no other verbal motions. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posting a referral. Members, any other, any announcements?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Price?
I'd like to announce that the Economic Development Committee will be meeting at 2 o'clock. Economic Development at 2 o'clock.
Economic Development Committee will be meeting at 2, 2 o'clock this afternoon. Mr. Lee, do you have an announcement?
No, Madam President, just a journey motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sadio, for journey motions.
Madam Chair, you have frequently heard me and the council has talked about the great families of Borah Heights and the great community that I grew up in. Today, Borah Heights and the City of Los Angeles lost a great Angelino in Danny Alba. Danny's the son of Joe and Carmen Alba. He was born in 1955. And it's just one of the many families that created the fabric of Borah Heights. You know, a consummate person from Borah Heights. He went to Breed Street Elementary, up the street from the Breed Street School, went to Hollenbach Junior High School. He was a rough rider, received a BA from USC, and then later a master's in education from CSU LA. For 16 years, he worked at Ally USD, led that board. He worked in Lincoln High School, Eagle Rock, back at Roosevelt. Then for five years, he was Department Chair of History. And then three years on the Extension Program, working both at Roosevelt and Garfield, working with our at-risk youth. 1994, he took a task of starting up and directing the Los Angeles branch of facing history and our size, and ourselves, rather. It's a nonprofit that's committed to improving teachers' ability to engage their students in civics, social studies, humanities, and language arts through empathy and self-reflection. During his 24-year tenure, Dan touched every school in the greater Los Angeles area, working particularly with educators, making them better at what they do. As I said, he's the son of Joe and Carmen Alba. He was, I remember him at Roosevelt. He's a good guy, super great guy, very popular, very easy get-along guy. He played chess. He was a, played the clarinet. He was a cartoonist. And then very actively in the most recent years as a, in our reunions. We love.
Looks, seems like we, Mr. Sadio just froze.
Our reunions, and he was our.
Oh, there you are, you're back.
Recent one, on his cartoons and.
Mr. Sadio.
And committed himself to finishing each day. He's survived by his partner Carol, his loving, doting son Diego, his father, for whom he was the caregiver. He has six siblings, many cousins, nephews, nieces, and numerous close friends. One of Borah Heights' most popular persons, sharp wit, great humor, just one of these persons in Borah Heights that everybody knew, everybody liked. Just a really special Angelino and a special friend from Borah Heights. So I ask for a closing on this honor.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, sadly, we have lost another member of our Los Angeles Police Department. Today, I'm asking that we adjourn in memory of LAPD Sergeant Fred Cuado, who passed away on Sunday from complications of COVID-19. He contracted COVID-19 while on duty. Sergeant Cuado began protecting and serving Los Angeles residents in '98, most recently serving at the Foothill Division in my district. He spent over 22 years of his life in service to his community and was known for always having a smile on his face and being the consummate professional. Sergeant Cuado is survived by his wife Kelly and their five kids. His passing is a huge loss for our city and his family. You know, it's, it's just a really tragic reminder of how many of our first responders continue to put themselves out on the front lines in service to our community during these very difficult times. And as a result, has now lost his life and his battle with COVID-19. For anyone listening who has, again, for whatever reason, not heeded the calls of what COVID-19 is doing to families and how it's running rampant, in particular here in my community, here in the Northeast Valley, we want to remind everybody that even he, Captain Smith, who's assigned at Foothill, he and I had been speaking about Sergeant Cuado's progress. And he had just had a conversation with him on Saturday and was feeling very positive about his physical improvements. And then just to succumb the following day to, to COVID. So, and, and the complications associated with it. So just another tragic reminder that we have unfortunately lost another Angelino and another dedicated public servant as a result of their service to our city and our, and to our community. And I ask that we adjourn it in his memory.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just notified about some incredibly sad news about someone, a member of our city family that we lost. And not just someone that we worked with, but a dear, dear friend. Some of you who've been here long enough in the building can remember Lynn Ozawa, Assistant Deputy CLA, died this morning. She started her career as a Management Assistant Analyst in 1977. She moved to different departments. She worked in the CAO's office, City Clerk's office, DOT, and then retired after 33 years of service as Assistant CLA. For those of you who have been in this building long enough to remember Lynn, you know she was someone that you turned to whenever you had a project in your district, someone when you had an issue that you needed solved. Lynn could always do that, and you knew that you could count on her for everything. But she wasn't just someone that you worked with. She was someone that supported you and your council office by showing up to different events, to volunteer, to, you know, all of our different holiday breakfasts that we served to different departments. She's just someone with always an optimistic upbeat smile on her face. Working in the city is a family affair for her. I'd like to share our condolences with her daughter, Labor Relations Specialist Stephanie Ozawa, in the CAO's office. Just our hearts go out to someone. If you knew Lynn, you, you loved her. And our, I just want to send our heartfelt regrets to her family and let her know, her family know that she was deeply, deeply loved by this city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. I've got an announcement. This past summer, we celebrated the 25th anniversary of the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, the historic Central Avenue Jazz Festival. And although we were not able to gather on Central Avenue this year because of COVID-19, we have developed special programming with great performances that we all can enjoy while safe at home. On Monday, December 14th, catch a special documentary on the first annual Jazz Festival, Central Avenue Live. That's going to be at 7:30 Tuesday. On December 15th, at 8:00 PM, Barbara Morrison and the Blue Crew, the Boo Crew, are going to be performing. And on Wednesday, December 16th, at 8:00 PM. the sixteenth, at eight PM, it's Robert Glasper and Terrence Martin. And closing out the festival, on Thursday, December the seventeenth, at eight PM, is the Jazz Classics, featuring Patrice Russian, Ernie Watts, Marvin Smitty Smith, and Reggie Hamilton. And again, to neighbors and friends, although we're not going to be celebrating in person like in years past, you are able to, to view the event virtually on channel thirty-five, and encouraging all the neighbors to turn to City View on thirty-five, and also at www.centralavjazzfest.com. So please plan on coming out and joining us on Monday, the fourteenth, Tuesday, the fifteenth, Wednesday, the fifteenth, Wednesday, the sixteenth, and Thursday, the seventeenth, as we celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Central Avenue Jazz Festival. All are welcome. Be there or be square. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Price. See no other members on the queue? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Maria Hall Brown, and this is L.A. Currents.
Choreographer Martha Graham said, "Dance is the hidden language of the soul." Our guests today know that all too well. I'm so delighted to be joined by members of the dance team, The Roulette, Connor Lundius and Catherine Elliott. So great to have you guys here.
Thank you.
All right, straight off the bat, Dance Team The Roulette. I know it was created by this wonderful, wonderful dancer, Chelsea Hill, but what is it and what do you guys do?
So we are a dance team made up of women with disabilities, women in wheelchairs, and our main mission is to empower other women and girls with disabilities to live boundlessly and shift perspective through dance.
So you were always a dancer?
I personally have been a dancer since I was five years old, and then I was injured at the age of twenty-two. My last performance, able-bodied, was just a couple months before my injury, and I found The Roulette about six months after, and since then, I haven't stopped dancing.
What was it like to know that there were other women out there that really wanted to do exactly what you were doing and had faced the same sort of, you know, hurdles that you had to face?
For me personally, it was just such a strange feeling because our founder, Chelsea Hill, and I have very similar stories. We both grew up dancing competitively, and then were injured, and we're kind of like, wait, like, what's next? Like, I don't want my life to change at all. So it was just really empowering for me to find people out there, women specifically, that have the same, like, goals in life and the same passion.
Catherine, you weren't, you didn't actually have an accident. You actually had something that, you know, ultimately led to where you are today. It was different. So did you have a period of preparation that you knew that eventually you might not be able to walk?
So whenever I was nine years old, I was actually paralyzed for about two months. And from the time that I was nine to fifteen, I was healthy and active. I was actually a cheerleader in high school and middle school, and it just kind of came on when I was fifteen years old. I was diagnosed with an autoimmune disease called transverse myelitis.
I don't know what that is.
It, it attacks your nervous system. So my body attacked itself, and it left scar tissue on my spine, so it blocks the signals from my brain to my toes, causing paralysis.
So how did you find The Roulette, then? Because both of you are not exactly, I mean, now you're in California, but neither of you were originally from California.
Mm-hmm. I am born and raised from Houston, Texas, and...
Now I hear the accent.
Yeah. I met a few of the girls at an abilities expo, and Chelsea invited me to come to a camp, and two days later, I flew out knowing none of the girls, and I never hung out with anyone in a chair my age, and since then, it just...
There you are.
In history.
Okay, so it's not just dance competitions, because I know that you have competed in different venues, you know, all over the place. But this is really more than that. I mean, you're talking about the fact that, you know, you get together, you've had these camps and that kind of thing. And even before we started to talk on camera, you were little sisters. So that sounds amazing. What's the program?
So the Little Sister Program was something that The Roulette started and held on to for a couple years. That's where...